Good evening, I'm gonna call the City Council Workshop for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. Really, the main thing here, we're talking about some budget stuff, is the first thing is the twenty twenty-six budget information. General Fund, Utility Funds, and Tax Levy. Finance Director Clarissa Hadler. Will be. Perfect.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Obviously, we're here to chat about the twenty twenty-six budget. We're gonna go through some objectives for the workshop, so we're gonna learn about our proposed changes to operations and the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. We're gonna look at how the budget and levy changes, or kind of think about how the budget and levy changes fit with our high-level and long-term goals. And then, we would really appreciate direction for us as staff to make any revisions that Council seems feels appropriate in preparation for the adoption of the preliminary levy in September. The levy certified in September cannot be increased, but it can be decreased before the final certification in December. I just realized I have to be closer to the microphone, Dustin, I'm not sure this chair's gonna work if I...
We can move the mics, too.
All right, so you will recall, we had our fabulous strategic planning session back in, when was that, late January, February? And we came up with these core strategies and objectives at that meeting, so there's six listed. So we have our normal operations, but then as we're going through our goals and setting setting up or going through our budget and setting our goals for next year and how to implement those, those do have definitely an effect on the budget moving forward. So which of them? Most of them, I have them listed here, so we have a lot of planning for development goals. We have a lot of financial strategy goals, staffing levels and service delivery are sort of an ongoing issue here, and then as well as some facilities planning within that. So our total levy for, proposed levy for twenty twenty-six is twelve million, two hundred and five thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars. That is over a two-million-dollar increase from last year and a twenty-one percent increase. We are projecting the tax rate would go from the current, the twenty twenty-five rate of twenty-six point eight-four up to thirty-one point seven-two. Those are estimates at this point, and that is four point eight-eight percentage points higher than twenty twenty-five. So this is my intro to the city budgets slide, so just to kind of get an idea of where money comes from and where it goes. So under governmental funds, you can see we have the general fund, service, debt service funds, and then our capital funds. And we'll get to the right column later, so we're gonna start with the governmental funds. Our general fund expenditures are broken up, general government, which is like admin, mayor, planning-type stuff, public safety, roughly fifty percent of our budget, public works, roughly a quarter, and then we have some contingency built in. So here is that, essentially that by the numbers. So an overall, sorry, overall general fund expenditures of eight million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars, which is a twelve point nine percent increase over the prior year. So what is driving this increase? Here's just kind of a quick rundown. We have some new positions proposed, there are memos in your packets, so three fire chiefs, which would be scheduled for half of twenty twenty-six and then the full year twenty twenty-seven, and then one additional public works staff member. Salary and benefits is kind of our standard, we assume a three percent cola as well as steps where appropriate. Some projects for this year, we have an election year, so that, every other year, that budget swings up and down. We have the second year implementation of our financial software, and our comprehensive planning process, which is a three-year process, and it just takes up a lot of our contract services, so engineering and planning, outside planning. And then some facilities planning, so for the fire station, one hundred and eighty acres, and then some ball field planning. We have some increased engineering costs because we switched from focus to Bolton and Mink, we are seeing those costs rise. We have the costs of maintaining our new city center, we're getting a better idea of what those costs are and planning for future maintenance. Health insurance, we have tentatively planned for ten percent, we did the same thing last year and it ended up coming in significantly lower. We just want to be safe because we don't know what that looks like year to year, we'll have those numbers in November. And then twenty twenty-five is a computer year, sorry, twenty twenty, than twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six is a computer year, twenty twenty-five was not. So we just have the more hardware costs than we had last year. So this is the breakdown for general government. Again, I kind of reiterated some of the changes in the projects, so eighteen percent change overall and due to those items that I previously listed. For public safety, we're looking at just over ten percent, largely due to the fire captains and some additional paid on-call fire hours, and then just getting our animal control budget where closer to actual. Public works, our streets department is actually looking at a decrease because we shifted the allocations of some staff members. And then parks is looking at the increase largely due to those wages. And then there's an additional staff member proposed that would be split across all of the those public works departments. So again, overall, general fund expenditures of eight point, oh, just under nine million. So that is largely operations, we do then need to just kind of question, how is that funded, right? So we have our revenue, earned revenue, which is licenses and permits, charges for services, intergovernmental and fines. So licenses and permits, we're highly subsidized by building permits as well as plan review, which falls under charges and services. And then after that earned revenue, we need to fill the gap, the remaining gap with property taxes. So this is the breakdown of those general fund revenues, you can see that taxes makes up roughly three-quarters of our revenue sources, and then licenses and permits and charges for services, which is again, plan review related to building. I want to just point out the intergovernmental section has a decrease of almost seventy-eight percent. That's because we're shifting some activities away from the general fund into these capital funds, and so it used to be that our MSA dollars were deposited into the general fund, and right now I have them proposed going directly into those project funds, so we have the street maintenance fund, which is a portion of that, and then the infrastructure reserve, which is where we pull the money for those reconstruction projects. So those MSA dollars will go directly into those funds. So then property taxes, you can see up at the very top, increase from five point six million up to six point seven million. So next up, debt service and capital funds. So our debt service increased, we have that new issuance this year, so that added roughly two hundred thousand dollars to that, increase of almost seven percent. And then capital levies, again, this is kind of a new process for us, we just started doing this in twenty twenty-five. Prior to that, it was, there were a couple of transfers from the general fund or things were getting paid directly out of the general fund, and it was just, we want to steer away from those transfers and the big swings in the general fund expenditures. So we've increased the infrastructure reserve up to half a million dollars, the city center CIP up to one-twenty. I created a very rough estimation of what our depreciation would be on this building and trying to get that CP, CIP dollar or levy dollar up to that amount, or a portion of that amount. Park CIP is just for future replacement of park facilities. The ballpark fund is for that interfund loan for the new property, the ballpark property that we purchased this year. So that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over ten years. Vehicle line equipment has been in existence for a few years, so we've, again, just kind of getting that up to the level where we're able to replace things with cash. And then the street maintenance is the roughly six hundred thousand dollars, I increased it this year because of inflation, but the estimation created a couple of years ago was six hundred thousand dollars per year in street maintenance. So that is not necessarily what we will spend, that's what we're levying so that we can levy at a roughly steady amount and spend when we need it. So some of all those debt, sorry, that should say capital levies, two million and fifty thousand dollars. So total levy, again, is the sum of the general fund levy, debt levies and capital levies. So we'd like to look at the tax rate and the impact, again, we're looking at a tax rate of thirty-one point seven-two percent. And so the tax impact on a median value home would be a little over three hundred dollars. So from sixteen sixteen up to nineteen twenty-six. Our tax rate compared to other Washington County cities were still fairly low, I tried to draw that little line across there, so we'd probably move up a few points within the county overall. However, if you look at the cities, our size, we'd probably just move one step up possibly in front of Scandia, obviously depending on what happens with every other city and their levies and rates and such. These are twenty twenty-five numbers except the green bars that are twenty twenty-six proposed. Just a note on tax rates, tax rates are really just one measurement that we use for comparison. It does not nearly tell the whole story of what is going on with cities. We don't know what their debt levies are, we don't know what their capital levies have been or will be in the future. Some of the reasons that Lake Elmo has been able to maintain a relatively low tax rate is that we have pretty high property values, the tax rate is just a comparison between our tax capacity and our levy. We've been subsidized by development, so a lot of our operations have been funded by our, some of our plan reviews and such. And then we have not been levying significantly for future CIP projects. So briefly, we'll touch on proprietary funds, we do have the long-term financial plan that we do for the utilities each year, so we try to sort of base some of our assumptions on that as well as look at our expenses in more real time. So kind of mentioned a little study, assumptions, so the rates, that's kind of the main thing that, you know, we base our forecasting for the budget on those rates. Those are not adopted until the end of the year, or early next year, actually, possibly. And then one change in process for the capital planning, I'm working on separating the capital revenues and expenses into new funds. So we have the six oh one, six oh two, six oh three right now, and so we're looking at having capital funds of six eleven, six twelve, and six thirteen. So each water sewer and storm would have its own capital fund, and so we would put the more capital-related revenues into those and take out the expenses, just to kind of clean it up a little bit, make it a little more obvious where the money's going and coming from. One point about enterprise funds, they're, they use full accrual accounting, so it includes depreciation. The way that we budget in Excel kind of takes into account like some of the bond payments and stuff, it's really not clear. So what you're looking at here is includes depreciation, we're not losing one point three million dollars in cash every year, so. A little bit of a change, and then, sorry, it also takes into account capital purchases. So if we had significantly higher capital purchases last year than this year, then that's gonna change our end numbers, so. Net overall in water of negative three million, again, largely due to depreciation.
So depreciation wasn't included in twenty-five but is in twenty-six?
It is included, so under operations, it's, yes, it's, well, you know what? I'd have to verify that, but I believe it, I believe it was included in that budget, yeah. It gets a little weird just because these systems that we have set up, I'm hoping this gets a lot better with new software, thank you, by the way, for, again. So this will become a lot easier for us, we're sort of trying to move between systems constantly with these, and this is not an ideal system by any means, so.
So in this scenario, you have added water treatment at well two, you say potential for grant reimbursement, but I thought we were okay with the grant reimbursement on that.
Do you know where we're at with the...
We've applied for a three-year operation and maintenance grant, and we expect, it's just a matter of being reviewed by the MPCAs.
We did budget for it, so it's incorporated in the budget.
Budgeted for getting the grant.
Right, right.
Okay, good.
And again, these are, this is the preliminary budget, we are gonna be fine-tuning this as we go, and as we get more information, this will change between now and December slightly. So sewer net, negative two point four-ish, storm net, negative one. So that's it for the numbers, our next steps, if we need a follow-up workshop, we could certainly do that. We adopt the preliminary levy in September, the county mails notices in early November. We'll be fine-tuning our budgets between now and December, and then the truth and taxation hearing, we plan to schedule for December sixteenth, and that would be the time of the final budget and levy adoption. And now, we have time for questions, so our questions really are, where do we go from here? Are there changes in priorities that we need to make? Are there specific questions about expenditures that Council has for staff? Should we continue with the proposed levy amounts, or should we change that in some way before that September sixteenth meeting? And if changes are needed, some very direct, specific direction as far as priorities and strategies that we should revise.
Questions, Councilmember Holt?
Thank you for all that, because that is a ton. With animal control, can you clarify, bring it up to what the actual cost were, what's happening there?
Our, we budgeted around fourteen point five, I think, and when I, when we were looking back at the actual last two years, sorry, in twenty twenty-five, we budgeted fourteen point five, but when we actually looked at the last couple of years' actual expenditures, they were higher, closer to like nineteen and twenty-four, so we picked sort of a middle, ground, happy, medium-type thing.
You look in the spreadsheet, twenty-three and twenty-four were closer to that, twenty-two thousand. It's just good to add, if you have cats, you know, keep track of them, because it costs us like three hundred bucks if somebody has to go look for your cat.
That's true.
Or your dog.
So, because it's, because obviously we contract out, we can't predict how many instances we're calling them.
Correct.
They're not necessarily increasing their rates, it's just, can't predict the quantity.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about the rates specifically.
And then with, with cola at three percent, do we know what other people, other entities are estimating for their cola if they're choosing to have one?
I don't.
I just ask that as, right now, CPI is about two point seven, but, thanks.
Sure.
Councilmember Hearn.
The, and I might have missed it, and maybe it's actually in the twenty twenty-five budget, is the RFP revenue factored into, for the firehouse, factored into the revenues at all?
It is, I believe, I would have to look at the line item again, I believe I settled on roughly one fifty, maybe a little higher for the general fund, and then I assumed, we've been talking, we think it's gonna be significantly higher than that. I'm hoping that we can put the balance of it into one of the capital projects, so the city center CIP for future use, given that it's a building that we're selling, I'm hoping we can put it into a building and not, again, subsidize the general fund more than we need to by a sort of, you know, occasional revenue that we can't count on in the future.
Okay, but it's the twenty twenty-six revenue?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Awesome. Now, I saw the investment earnings up one hundred and ten percent, is that just because of significantly more money that we're investing, is that...
It's because I budgeted low, I was trying to budget a little bit more towards the actuals moving forward, yeah.
Councilmember Dragicic.
Difficult budget, but I just don't see that we can increase our tax levy twenty percent. I think that would be, we would get such beating, we'd have to hide in our basements for a month. We have to find a way to get that, a better number. As I thought about it, I've looked through everything, and I certainly could expound on some potential changes, but I think that's what our staff is for, to look at and say, where can we reduce in some way that gets us to a more reasonable amount of a tax levy increase? You know, if we put on twenty percent and school in the county put on something, I mean, we see such huge tax increase that we would all be hiding.
I guess one thing to look at, when I, when I look at this, I did see a large increase, but I also know, when we start looking at the depreciated value of things that haven't been accounted for in the past, it gets a little lumpy, right? So in the past, our city, our residents, taxpayers have been, for lack of a better term, getting off pretty inexpensive relative to the cost for water, sewer, storm sewer, operational costs. And now that we're getting a better handle on what those things cost and actually trying to cover those costs like a, like a business would need to, which is what you need to do, you can't operate in a deficit, and it is oftentimes governments looked at as wanting to remain static. Well, we can't remain static because the price of milk and eggs and everything goes up regularly, gas, vehicle costs. So if there's something in the trim, I'm willing to listen to it, but I'm also an advocate of listening to the staff and seeing what they, what they believe is needed for the budgets that they have to take care of the residents and the city assets as a whole.
Remember, the twenty percent tax increase doesn't include anything for sewer water or storm water, that's a separate item.
It is.
And so, you know, we, we...
But a lot of that in the past, correct me if I'm wrong, have been somewhat covered by, I don't know, they've been in a negative, right?
Yeah, they're not covering their operating expenses, and we talked about that last year, we raised our water rate twenty percent. We had a plant due twenty twenty twenty, which after five years got us to where we were, where we need to be. If we get the operational grant for the new plant, that will allow us to not have such big increases. It'll cover, some of that big increase was due to the new plant projected coming online. We still have, you know, storm water and sewer to deal with, but I think that, you know, those are somewhat easier to work out. If we have a twenty percent increase in our tax levy and twenty percent increase in our utility rates, I mean, we're gonna have a fairly large burden in one year on our citizens.
Okay, I think, though, that this workshop's for trying to iron some of those things out, and I'd be interested in hearing what you, areas that you think we can cut to bring that levy down, and we should talk about those.
Maybe, I'll talk on that a little bit, too, so I'm gonna, I do agree, a twenty-one percent increase in the total levy, in my mind, is too much. I agree, obviously, if the numbers were too low in the previous years, like, that can obviously be a part of why it could be a big jump this year. But in my mind, it's too big of a jump. Last year, I took more of the approach of coming into this session with, you know, line, specific line items of, you know, these are my suggestions, and reflecting on it, I don't think that was the right way to do it. I think the staff has a better idea of what specific line items could potentially be cut versus what could be reduced versus what can't. So in my mind, I think, my preference would actually be to say more like, hey, I think we need to cut this number to a ten percent increase, and, you know, how we go about that, that's up to staff to bring back to us. And I mean, that's just speaking from last year, you know, I brought up a lot of the individual line items and I understand that, like, it's frustrating, right, if I'm asking about a ten thousand dollar item? You know, my, my ideal last year with doing that was more just to bring to light of like, hey, like, well, if we have a hundred items that we're paying ten thousand dollars that we don't need for, that's significant. But at the same time, some of those things absolutely were needed. And so, you know, to your question of like, what specifically should we focus on? I mean, yeah, like, as I was looking through, there were certain things, again, that raised questions for me, but I don't know if me giving those is the right approach. I, personally, I'd like to see this come down to the total levy increase to ten percent, I think is the max that we should aim for. I mean, again, correct me if I'm wrong, this was before I was on, on council, but I believe the goal was the three percent increase in the tax rate year over year?
Yeah, I don't know where that came from, I don't recall that exactly, so...
It was, it was brought up, so the first year I was on council, when we were reviewing the budget, that's what was brought up of why to not keep it the same.
Yeah.
It was the two percent increases, what was...
Yeah, the hard part I have with that is sometimes, as we experience, we're a growing city, right?
Yeah.
And there's different expectations from the residents revolving around the services that the city gives and how they give it.
Yeah.
And I, sometimes I see companies say, we're gonna hit a twenty percent profit margin. Well, what's that based off? Well, that's what they want to do. So if somebody said, let's keep it to a three percent increase, what's that based on? I have no idea.
Sure.
Sometimes it's just an arbitrary number that maybe it doesn't fit, so I think, you know...
And I was trying to find that Ailer's financial plan, I didn't see anything in there about it.
Yeah, so I, I think when we look at numbers, that, you know, if, if things don't make sense as far as where the council would like to see the city spending its money, you know, when you're talking cutting that in half, you're looking at over a million dollars in cut?
Yeah, it would be about a little, just a little over a million.
Yeah, so it's not small, it's not a small ask, it's not a small budget item.
But it's also not a small ask for, you know, a million dollars for the taxpayers.
You could cut down some of the, some of the capital pockets that you're putting money into, maybe slowly increase those as opposed to starting out a large number, I don't know.
That is a slow increase compared to what we need, actually.
Yeah, right, right, because you end up, you end up at the end of the day, big ticket item comes up and then you have to bond for it, and then you're adding to your debt, correct?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm open to listening, and you have, if we think staff needs to put a sharper pencil to the paper, we can ask that. But I think what I heard Director Hadler ask is, if we have, you know, maybe it's not specific line items, Councilmember Herm, but maybe it's areas, right? You know, one of the large items, not to pick on Chief, but, you know, for running a fire department and you have twenty-four-hour shifts, you know, the three captains is, it's a, it's not a small number, but if you want to run your fire department for the city at that level, and then, then that's, that's kind of what it takes to run it from a staff level, and that does increase, and I mean, it's only half the year next year, it'll be the whole year in twenty-seven, so keep that in mind.
Just some thoughts that I had looking at it, you know, this one's a little more painful there, but the, but if we reduce some of these levies, let's say the infrastructure levy, we go to, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand, because we did add the franchise fees of two fifty to that. So that's got six hundred thousand there. I think concurrently, we can reduce some of our capital CIP expenditures to bring that more in line as well. Maybe we can reduce the CIP levy from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-four. Maybe we can reduce the CIP levy from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and, um. You know, just kind of looking at those, tho- those different types, the park CIP levy, we have a new levy, um, we have a hundred thousand in there. I guess we're just.
We're also putting some of the.
Franchise fee, like two hundred and fifty thousand in there.
Is that, is that accounted for franchise fee in there, Director Handler?
In the, well, there, there really isn't any expenditures coming out of the park CIP right now, so I, I didn't really create a budget for it per se.
But ideally, we have a ballpark number that will be getting it in the franchise fee to support both infrastructure and parks, right?
The franchise fees are included in the infrastructure reserve budget. They will, but again, it's, this is such, these are all kind of new processes.
Right.
And for this particular meeting, I didn't do a lot for that, but you will recall from our CIP discussion. That we have these reports out of our, um, CIP planning software, Planet, where we can kind of pencil in what these revenues amounts were gonna be. And so we have that sort of roughly planned out. Um, and we'll, we'll, again, we'll kind of revisit that later in the year, but, um.
I could, I mean, I could hear that discussion on if those franchise fees would allow us to. Cut back on some of the capital levies for those areas.
I've already worked the franchise fees into the modeling that we have for the CIP. Obviously, everything changes if we change, you know, what, what we're spending on our capital projects, so.
Okay.
Everything is essentially good for about five minutes until we change something and then we have to redo it or whatever, but, yeah.
But I think those are the things we look at. What can we do with these CIP? Like, what can we do with the CIP to get this down to something more manageable? I, I think that, you know, the ongoing maintenance, things like, you know, the street maintenance levy and that are important. That saves us some long-term money. I think, you know, our infrastructure reserve, we're gonna have to maybe creep a little slower than we're anticipating to get there and combine that with a little less spending. To make that, um, make some sense. And maybe, you know, with the franchise fee going in, pardon, going to parks, maybe we can, you know. Hold back on the park levy a little bit, but I'm trying to make some suggestions, but we have a staff that's very talented that knows everything a little bit better than we do. I, I agree with the chief. It's, you know, we need, we need to staff our fire department, just public safety, you know, you don't want. You know, you don't want your, your loved one laying on the floor and, and not having enough staff to get there. We live, you know, we exist for health, safety and welfare of our, of our residents. So we have to take a look at those kinds of things and prioritize them. But I think we gotta get this down to a little more manageable number. That's just thoughts of one crazy council person.
Well, and I agree. I think the capital expenses is, is a good place to start. Councilmember Holt, you brought up the, the COLA. I guess I'd be interested to hear your thoughts on that. I, I, I think that's an area. I mean, we do have the rate increases factored in. I, I think that's a, an area to look. Um, I do think that.
Sorry.
All right. I, it's one of the questions tonight, obviously, with the, with the, the three captains for the, the fire department. That's obviously a pretty large expense that could factor into, to getting towards that decrease of a ten percent total levy versus a twenty-one percent increase. You know, I, I don't know how it factors in, um, and. I wanna be careful, you know, the, the, the summers, right? The Fridays off in the summers. You know, what happens if, if we get rid of that and does that mean we don't need to hire as much staff as a result of that because there's more hours that are being worked? I don't know how those hours are account, accounted for during the summer.
Everybody still works forty hours. Let's just shift it. So it's four nines and a four. Everybody still works forty hours.
Just they shift it. Perfect. And so this, I mean, but I think this is, I guess that's my point is. You guys understand that side of it better and you're gonna know where to find these areas that can be decreased, although it may be difficult and it may be hard. And it would be, may be necessary and, and if it is necessary, then okay, then. I guess, you know, then bring that back and say so. Um, but as of right now, I just, I'm, I, I.
I didn't wanna.
Can't go along with until I see it get lower.
I didn't wanna bring up the, uh, the, the, the captains were just an example of that's, that's a large increase that I think is important for the city and the residents to have that. So those are the kind of numbers that, that increased the total levy, right? So. It's just trying to find if there's any, uh, fat to cut off the meat really, um, in that and. So I didn't mean to put the chief in an uncomfortable position because I talked to him about it earlier so I could better understand how the captains correlated and, and integrated with the, with, with the department overall.
The hard, one of the thoughts I have with all this is. If our levy rate was twenty-eight percent this past year and prior years, twenty-seven prior years, because we had a, a history previously of ten, fifteen years ago of actually. Planning and doing depreciation and knowing our long-term cost. I, the, the change would be, I think, what many are asking for, a manageable change. So on, on one side of the coin, it is a substantial increase. I don't like it. The other side of the coin is, is that the cost? If that's the cost, that is the cost. I, I mean, you mentioned it. If we have to invest a certain amount of dollars into our capital funds to actually save money in the long term by maintaining properly. Yeah, there is a front-end harm to that and I, I don't wanna necessarily bring up what has happened in years past because it doesn't matter at this point. But it also impacts then how we see it. We're, we're seeing it as a jump of, from, of several points. That I don't, I remember those conversations, but I don't, I still remember Chris, it was Christina who brought it up, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And I can never recall, was it two percent or two points? And part of her calculation also presumed a certain rate of tax capacity growth, which was a shot in the dark. Cause there, you can't predict, but yeah, I, I fully remember those as well, because that was what we were trained on when we started as well. We were trained. But the final, we never saw the final details. The, the tax capacity growth piques my interest because we're seeing the tax capacity, the amount of increase slow. Because we know the economy is slowing. We, whether or not we have a recession in the next year or two is a realistic conversation. And so I'm very hesitant when we, this is the way it's always been for years now, a decade plus. You know, our building inspection, inspections, the permit area, that's a source of revenue that's gonna continue to slow. It might slow more than we're, you're even projecting. And I know you're conservative with it to begin with. But my underlying point there is tax capacity, the amount of increase is going to continue to slow, which affects that underlying. Formula from ten years ago of we're gonna do two points every year. I, I can't, I can't go down that road. I fully concur. There is a, it is strong desire to find those areas. Chief, sorry, this is the easiest one, but I think that's also a prime example to say here is. Yeah, we're looking through it, like there are multiple ones where it's a, a change here, a change there. An additional employee for Public Works that we all know is necessary. It, it's absolutely necessary and it costs money. The captains are absolutely necessary and it costs money. So I. At the end of the day, if the costs are the costs, yes. If there is, are things here and there that you're able to see in the lines that we're not necessarily seeing, yes, absolutely, let's find those things. I, in looking at it, I don't see those. But yeah, we all support finding if there's something here, something there, yes, absolutely. I don't know if I support. Trimming a couple of levies here and there because it's, it's a shot in the dark. Let's do twenty thousand there, twenty thousand there, when it's not necessarily based upon the future modeling. You already indicated, we're not going, we're not investing as much as would be helpful to begin with for some of our long-term.
For our capital needs. Actually, I ran some numbers earlier, uh, today. Um, you know, we, we have our, our. Documents for the audit that show what we have for assets and what we have for depreciation, so I rounded like a lot. But we have roughly twenty million dollars in buildings. So if every building lasts fifty years, that's four hundred thousand dollars a year. We're loving a hundred and twenty just right now, right? That's the, the proposed. We have improvements other than buildings at four million, machinery and equipment at ten million. So if the average machinery, piece of machinery and equipment lasts ten years, that's one million dollars per year. We're at four hundred and fifty. We have infrastructure, this is just general fund, not water and sewer, infrastructure of one hundred million dollars. So if all of our infrastructure averages fifty years. It's two million dollars per year and I'm proposing five hundred thousand, right? And, and so this is now, we have twenty-five million in assets we've already depreciated. So we've already spent that asset and we have a couple million dollars in the bank, uh, reserved for CIP stuff, right? So this is that, when I think we did just a little bit of a comparison for the utility funds, we were looking at like, what is our cash relative to our depreciation? And it's very, very low. Um, and so we're trying to do kind of the same thing here with the general fund is like, how much cash do we have versus how much we've already depreciated? And this is just, again, just a really rough gauge of, you know, where are we sitting with cash versus needs long-term?
So what happens next year? Do we have to increase it by this much again next year to, to get even closer to what we're gonna need to do to. Match this amount of depreciation value?
Yeah, um, in the CIP plan, um, I have penciled in what those increases look like to get us up to an amount. Where we're, we're actually setting aside enough, the goal being that we're not taking out debt, you know.
Not setting aside enough for our current assets. The depreciation of our current assets is what you're saying.
Attempting to get to a point, at some point in the next twenty years of setting aside enough. Where we are well, well, well behind. This process should have been done twenty years ago when the city started to develop, right? And so, you know, we're, we're significantly behind where we should be today and the more we put it off, the worse future Lake Gomol.
The bigger that delta gets.
Right.
That change from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six with the capital expenses and how much we're spending, is there gonna be another jump like that? Is that significant of a jump next year?
Absolutely. If you, if you want to, and this is, this is again, this is a policy decision. My job is to just do the math and try and get us in a position where the city is sustainable long-term. That's all this is. So your policy decision is how aggressive do we want to be? Is the money gonna come from somewhere else? So hence the franchise fees discussion.
Or the other end of it is, decrease the capital improvement plan budget as well.
Correct, yep, yep, obvi- yep, absolutely an option.
And so I think, again, I mean, I know that kind of leads into the next one, the next item on the agenda, but. I, I still do feel like the largest area that we could cut back is the capital expenses as a result of relooking at the CIP. And, and knowing, working backwards, right? If we can, if we wanna budget X dollars. Into the, uh, capital expenses, well, what can our CIP total amount be over the next ten years then?
Sure. I would just point out that, uh, so the CIP is essentially a, we call it a longer-term plan, but it's, it's only ten years, right? We're looking at roads that are.
How long does a road last? Jack, fifty years, hundred years? I wish.
So, so we're looking at.
Portions of the road are redone in twenty-five, not the whole road.
Right. So, so we're, when we're talking about, um, our capital expen- decreasing our capital expenses. You're talking about decreasing that capital expense in the next ten years, but the revenue that we're trying to set aside is. Long-term, it's only a portion, by the way, so we're trying to decrease the amount of debt. I still have, I don't recall exactly, but my debt projections were. We might have half the amount of debt that we have. If we set aside, um, something like thirty percent with ca- pay for thirty percent of our projects with cash, we'll be at half in twenty years.
And that wasn't decreasing expenses?
Right, right. But so, so and again, it's this like, we're, we're trying to, to build, we're, we have the tax revenues as set-asides. But it's not really the instant win that you think that it's gonna be necessarily, if that makes sense. So again, we're, we're like, we're way off between capital and depreciation.
It does. And I, I think it's the right call that we're being proactive with trying to increase the revenues to get there.
Yeah.
But the issue is oftentimes as revenues increase, you just spend more. And so we need to be looking at that side of it as well. I mean, that's budgeting. It's, it's a tough thing, right? Somebody gets a pay raise, what's, what's the first thing you wanna do?
Yep.
You wanna spend more of it. And if we're trying to decrease the debt, well, yeah, let's bring in more revenue, but let's spend less. And I know that's obviously challenging with a growing city, but there has to be some sort of move in that direction.
Remember the growth in the city for a lot of the infrastructure isn't paid for by the city. It's paid for by developers. What we're spending money on is rehabilitating existing infrastructure. But I don't think, when we look at it, I, I don't think five million a year in streets is sustainable. Unless we're, unless we're, we're just going to continue to raise taxes twenty percent every year, which I don't think our citizens are going to, you know, accept.
If I remember correctly, um, the expense, and Jack, you can correct me if I'm not remembering this right, but. There's an expenditure for roadways that gets, gets us to a point where we are primarily. Only doing rehabilitation as opposed to any full reconstruct or heavier types of, uh, fixes. And that capital expenditure does go down after like four years or something like that.
After like how many, forty years?
After four, sorry.
Well, not in the CIP we currently have.
The, I, I thought.
We're spending fifty million on streets over ten years.
I think, Mayor, I think it was, it was after the twenty thirty-five point with what you're talking about. It was after that.
Okay.
But.
It's newer, it's, it's on the, it's not on the fifty side, yeah, here, it's within the next five to ten, yes.
Okay.
Well, what happens if, if, can we still get to that same point in twenty years versus ten years? Or is it, you, you have to be that aggressive with it in ten years to get to the point where.
Probably not. Again, it's just, it's just how you want, how you, it, you can make that more gradual, sure.
I, I, I think maybe that would be the approach then is, okay, well, let's, let's, let's work in that direction. Let's go there more gradually. You know, this is usually like more my style is rip off the Band-Aid and go, but. From the taxpayer's perspective, I, I don't know if that's the right way to go.
That's an interesting analogy. It, it, cause it, and you said it too, Mayor, for years, we have not been paying for the costs. And I don't think, no one did it intentionally, but we also have qualified staff in place throughout the, throughout the enterprise right now. Who are telling us these are the costs. Is that ripping off the Band-Aid? I, I also agree. At this next conversation, maybe it's more of a transition, but as an example. Maybe it means this, there's not a, a park's shade shelter every year in a row for multiple years. Maybe it's one every ten years. Because that, that's literally what can be afforded. And that's one example. And I love those things and people have been asking for them.
Well, maybe you can't, like you said, you can't do them as, as quickly as maybe projected, so.
I, what I do appreciate is that we're having this conversation on a very hard topic. And it's actually, to me, this has probably been one of our better budget conversations in recent years. Cause we're all in agreement, it's how do we get there? And I, I'm very glad we have competent staff in place to inform us on the behind-the-scenes things that not one of us can, can do. So I appreciate that.
So it sounds like council's asking to come back workshop in September. And asking to see if we can, what it would take to bring down the levy. And if it can't, then the reasons why. And, and, uh, the explanation thereof, I guess. Is that, did I encapsulate that?
Yeah, and again, I just, I, I don't want it to feel like I'm just putting this on staff to come with those specific items. I just think that they're gonna know it best, so, you know. I think it can be challenging for the staff to come back and have to say specifically why, unless they wanna go through every single item.
Well, there's a lot of things in here that I recognize, like, um, you know, cause. And I, I talked with Director Hadler this, this afternoon. You know, you look at the IT support and if you look at that and the line items, it's in every department, right? It's parceled out. Seems like it's a lot. What, what's the total of that? And some, some of the, some of the areas you'll see it. And some, some of the, some of the areas you'll see it, it decreased a little bit because then it, it's increased a lot more in somewhere else. But we spend about a hundred, was it a hundred forty-four?
Hundred forty-two, I think.
Hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year on IT support for, for the city, for all the departments, the computers, the software, you know, things like that to keep that up to date. So, um, some of the things, that's just, that's the cost, right?
And that's, I mean, that's actually one I had highlighted is, you know, when I was thinking, all right, let's go through this line by line. Why is this fourteen thousand dollars more for this department? Ten dollars more for this department?
But it all balanced up to that total of one forty-two that we pay Metro I net.
What are, sorry.
No, go ahead.
What are council's thoughts on the COLA? And the reason I ask that is cause the largest contract in the state is gonna be doing a COLA, almost half of that. So-
You're talking about ASME?
Yep, uh, MAPE.
Oh, MAPE.
It's at one seven five.
Um, I guess we could look at the, you know, cause beyond the COLA, there are step increases for annual. Um, but we could look at the, what was the index you, you brought up?
There's two different CPIs, there's overall CPI, which right now for the year is at two seven. And then core CPI is at three point one, so.
Okay.
But core CPI excludes certain things, overall CPI is at two point seven. Cause I, yeah, we, we do have the bumps in there as well. If you earn it, you get it. I guess then it's the question of the COLA. I don't support zero, costs are increasing. But is there drastic savings by matching it to CPI? It's not gonna change significantly, but I, I think it's a worthwhile conversation.
Yeah, take a look at it.
Yeah, I think it's worth taking a look, again, maybe I, I don't know how it was factored in when the steps were, were determined with the rate increases. Was the COLA factored into that, was it not factored into it?
It's not factored in.
So, I, I think that's a conversation worth having, it, it's tough, but-
And each, and each step can vary within the grid. Are, are our steps like five percent differentials between the, the bumps?
Three percent.
They are three percent, oh, yeah.
Um, just a little bit of information from, um, HR group, um, that our HR coordinator attended. The COLAs they were talking about in that group were three to four point five percent. That's just in one group, the city officials.
In addition to the step, the annual?
They were just talking about COLA.
I think, I think sometimes we do just, or at least, I don't know, over the past thirty years of my career, we've, it's just that three percent number's always been just kinda thrown out like a nickel, right? It's like, ah, that's three percent, well, I guess it's worth taking a look at, but-
How do the, is the step, it's a three percent increase every year? Or is it based off of a promotion?
Based on years of service and meeting, if you have a, a performance plan, right?
Yeah.
Meeting your performance for the year that your supervisor believes that you, you go on to the next level. It's, it's, it should be a merit increase, right?
And how often should, could those steps be earned?
They're, once a year, except for when you're first hired, it's six months.
Six months, yeah.
And then it's every year after.
So we're talking a six percent increase between COLA and step?
No, it's, 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 they're different percentages, right? So it's not straight six.
I understand, like, you'd be like-
Could, it actually ends up being like six points.
Point something, right?
It's three percent of that, and now three percent of the new number.
New number.
Got it. Okay. So, not quite six percent, but four to five percent increase annually.
No, o- over six.
Over six.
Over, okay, so over six percent.
Yeah.
So I get, I mean, I guess that's what I was trying to ask is, with that example of, you know, if, if the, instead of steps, it's the annual increase is based off of three to four percent COLA, I think that's different than if it's both occurring.
Um, we do have a compensation plan, and we could look and see what that is, but that's what guides us as well for, um, which the council reapproves every year, which has the steps. So I am, I don't have it pulled up in front of me right now, but perhaps that sheds some light on this as well.
Yeah, so maybe it'd be a good conversation.
I actually, I can find it, but I did send, um, council another email, and I attached that, actually, recently, so.
Well, and the hard part with that, as we saw this past week, our grids, even with our, our comparison studies recently, our grids are still oftentimes less than many neighbors, depending upon which comparable city we do. So I, I, I am not in favor of saying either a COLA or a step increase. Uh, that's, we can't do that if we're gonna continue to attract and maintain quality staff. But I just brought up the three percent just cause that is above CPI. Clear as mud?
Clear as mud, um, I think, I don't know if you wanna speak to this at all, but I, I think I, um, speak for everyone if, um, if I say that staff would actually appreciate more direction with regard to certain priorities that should take higher priority than others. Um, we essentially base our, our budgets on, on the direction from council. Um, these are estimates, it's just a budget, we'll have a finer tune, you know, better numbers later in the year. Um, and actual may not be what, what we're, what we're budgeting. But, you know, my idea for cutting something might be different than somebody else's. Um, some budgets have more room. My budget doesn't have a ton of room other than, so if, if you said, cut your budget, everybody cut your budget ten percent, mine's coming straight out of training. That's just like, I just don't have other spots to take it from, right? And so when, when we're given this sort of broad scope, it's not, it gets a little tricky. Um, because if I'm cutting my training budget and another department is not, then it becomes this, you know, sort of equity issue across the board and such, it, does that, does that make sense?
It does. I mean, again, if we focus on the capital expenses though, in, in looking at the CIP items, reducing those, reducing the capital expenses, if we can get the majority of the decrease from that.
So I'll just, I'll say this, related to training is that, um, I think the council's made it, uh, fair standard that we do want our employees to do the training, to stay up to date with the new things, and we feel like that's important. So, and given what Councilmember Hearn said, is it, um, we know that these are far drawn numbers, and sometimes we're, uh, being conservative with those numbers. Um, to be safe, right? I get that. Animal control, for example, I mean, you gotta put a number, right? Twenty, could be nineteen thousand next year, we put in twenty-two. Maybe we, you know, but again, I don't wanna talk about thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there. It's, that's not, that's not the point of a budget, in my opinion. So maybe this is a good transition then, uh, since it is, you know, seven thirty, we've, we've gone over this. We've, we've brought up our comments, um, to go into the twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-five CIP and go through that. Would that be?
One of those, you know, if you look at specific lines, and I'm, I'm not picking anybody, I, I scrolled down quickly in, in the line item budget. So in the finance department, fifty thousand dollars increase for long range financial plan. Is that an area, or maybe we could delay that for a year, or do that differently, or?
We're gonna have a discussion about that, that is an excellent point, thank you.
I mean, I just kinda, your budget's near the top of the line, that one jumped out quickly. I'm not saying for, I guess, but those are kinda things, the department looks at and says, what can we, what do we absolutely need in twenty twenty-six to function effectively, or to provide, you know, services we need? And we could go through line by line and do that, but we don't really know, you know, enough detail to say that's a, I would hesitate just to cut something out of a department, just because I think it's crazy.
Um, I was just gonna add, um, and, um, Clarissa was on the same page as me. Perhaps, um, if you wanna look at, if we're looking at our operating expenses, in the beginning of her slide, she had that the majority of your short-term goals are what is included, staff working, moving forward on in twenty twenty-six. So of course, I always carry around our strategic plan, which has our short-term goals. So that would be probably, if you wanna get into that, helpful for us to go through them, and like, which one do you wanna slow down on, and we can look at that. I mean, it's not gonna be big, um, not like the capital expenses, not bigger chunks, but we do, um, need a little bit more direction, cause we are taking forward your goals and trying to make all your dreams come true.
Why does the cable franchise revenue basically get cut in half? Like, I see what it says, extra reimbursement in twenty-four, twenty-five, not expecting twenty-six. What was the extra reimbursement in twenty-four, twenty-five?
So, I'll try to cover this, but maybe you can help me. Um, the cable, um, commission, after they did their audit, they had some additional funds, and they did a one-time dispersment throughout the cities. And when I talked to them, they said, don't count on that again, so.
And it'll probably stay that way.
Yeah, she said, actually, um, not surprising, people are not using cable as much. And so the expected revenue, she said, for cities should be planning a decrease each year.
Where are we at in terms of, cause we, there's revenue for permits and expect inspections that's then used to pay for salary for permits and inspections. And there's some legal aspects to that, to make sure they're aligned. Where are we at in terms of cost versus revenue for that area? Are we raising amount that's pretty damn close to what we're spending? Or is there the ability to, cause I know we, we approved months ago the, the fee schedule. But in terms of the cost versus the revenue, are they closer aligned now than they were in the past? Several years ago, they were not close, and cities were warned, and they were threatened with lawsuits.
Yeah, we got some letter from the building, some Minnesota Building Group, right? Whatever they're called.
To say you can't have these be so out of alignment, you need to basically only collect what you're gonna spend.
I guess I don't really have that off the top of my head. We do fill out a, a fee report to the state, I could get you a copy of that via email later if you'd like.
Ju- just as an opportunity, because it, it's not, we're not in a position where we're laying off inspectors or laying off people in that area. But if we are presuming there's a decrease in new permits, but we still have other activities we need to continue to do, does that mean we need to make sure the revenue is still coming in, in other ways for that department, as an example?
Sure.
I do know that a number of cities have been sued in the last six months on those permit fees.
Yeah, cause they're collecting too much.
Collecting too much, yeah.
Yeah. I don't want that.
With, with the goals, just so I understand what you were asking there. So you were saying, look at the, the go- the first, the first slide, I think it was, where it had the goals listed.
Yep.
Can we, can you pull that slide up again, actually, please?
Yeah, it's not, it's wrong computer.
Her slide didn't have the actual goal.
Yeah, it's not the actual goals.
But I have, um, or we can, um, we can pull it up.
As the numbers of the goals.
Will it still be helpful, just as I look through it?
Yeah, we can.
So the number goals, so look through and say, hey, of these fifteen goals, which ones do we wanna prioritize? Which ones are maybe lower on the, the, the priority list for next year, the next couple of years?
Two, five, and ten.
And, and again, I, yeah, I'm happy to do that, I, I just, I'm, I'm very- From last year, I mean, I came with over a hundred single line items, and that did not go well. Mostly because they weren't the right ones, it just, it didn't make sense, and I wouldn't know. So I'm, I'm not going down that road again, I just, I think it makes more sense to look at, hey, like, you know, for the taxpayers, a twenty percent increase in the total levy, twenty-one percent is, is gonna be very hard to swallow. I, we need to get that down. How we get there, I think that's gonna have to come from the staff. And I, again, I, going through line by line, so I think this is gonna be helpful, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah.
I, I don't think-
We can pull up our, our goals, you know, we have a, a list of them in our, um, we can access it and display it.
Yeah, or if like, for time purposes, I can just send that after, or if we wanna do it now.
I mean, I could pull it up, and you can continue having the discussion on the next item. And if you have time, if you wanna revisit it, it'll be there.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's move into the CIP.
So I, we didn't prepare a presentation or anything, this is a request from, um, council members, right, that, and Hearn to revisit the discussion that we had on July ninth, does that sound right? Um, so we essentially just sort of gave you a link to the, to the packet. So we were happy to answer any questions.
Let me pull that up.
Sir, are you able to pull up the July eighth presentation from the CIP, just so they have?
Was it the ninth or eighth? He has it, he has it linked here. I don't like him going that way, all right.
Like, eighth?
But then it comes up at the end, and the word search does not work. I was gonna pull up the shade.
Sir, is there a particular slide or discussion that we would like to have on this?
Nick, you wanna lead it off?
No.
No? I mean, I can try, you'll probably say more elegant than me. Well, I'll start it off, I mean, less, yeah. I, I, I get, we've kind of had the conversation with the last item here. Again, I think, looking at the levy for this year, knowing, and for me, feeling like that's too large of an increase. Again, I was reflecting on last year, and I'm looking at these thousand dollar, five hundred dollar, thousand dollar line items. And I still think it's important to not be spending a thousand dollars when we don't need to be spending that thousand dollars. And especially if that's happening over and over again, it makes a big difference. But I think we needed to look at the bigger projects, and this is where obviously the, the bigger spend is coming. This is going into those capital expenses. I think working backwards might be a better, um, way of going about this of, okay, Councilmember Dragasic, you know, was helping me understand from the standpoint too, as far as like, I think it's fifty percent, or five million dollars a year that we're putting towards roads. And again, to the conversation we had in the, about with the levy, where, yes, if we could get to that point where, instead of having to be doing these large reconstructions, it's more, um, the maintenance side of it. And I, I, I wanna get there, and I think that's really good that we're being proactive about getting there. I think maybe we need to get there slower. I, I think we need to say, okay, well, what are, again, using the projections, knowing where we wanna get to. You, you mentioned that, hey, if we're increasing these revenues, that we can get it down to a thirty-five million dollar debt load in the next ten years.
Twenty.
Twenty million, better yet, right?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, okay? Well, great, let's, let's still increase the revenues, but let's also decrease the expenses. And, and this is so, I know this is challenging to decrease expenses, again, right? I was just looking at my personal budget a week ago, and it, you wanna spend every dollar you have, right? And i- it's really challenging to cut anything. Despite, hey, knowing, ten years ago, I lived on that, and it's fine, right? It, it's challenging though, and, but I do think we need to look at these capital expenses. I think the roads is, is probably the, the biggest one that I think needs to come down on an annual basis, which, um, yes, they still need to happen, but I think we need to- But I think we need to probably look at cutting that in half. Two and a half million dollars to roads per year versus 5 million. And I'm sure there's other areas as well throughout the, the CIP. But again, just trying to, instead of picking the smallest items and a bunch of them, well, okay, if that's really challenging to do, then what's the biggest thing that's costing us money? And what can we do with that expense to make the biggest impact right away? And that's where I, you know, with roads, that's where I'm kind of going with that. And that's why I wanted to bring it up. I, I wish I would have brought it up during the, the first discussion. I, I did have it written down in my notes even, I just didn't bring it up of, you know, what is the number that we want to get to? Let's work backwards from there. This number is too high for the CIP for 10 years. Let's bring that number down. And then let's figure out what we need to do from that. Prioritize, which again, which is hard. It's going to mean there are certain things that we may need, that we're going to still get, but maybe we can't get them right away.
Question. And I, I agree with, oh, pretty much all of that. I should know the answer, but now I'm questioning myself. Say, park items that were listed in the CIP, these aren't coming from the general fund. They're coming from the parks fund. Say, the shade structures that's coming from the park fund.
Park dedication, correct.
Which the levy itself of 30, the 31% levy is not affecting.
Not the park dedication. So, the park dedication comes from development. We have started levying for park replacement with the assumption that park dedication funds will end in the future and we will not be able to meet our, our replacement needs. So, certainly that would be one of the, kind of one of the quick fixes to decrease the levy is to just get rid of that secondary parks CIP. Now, that just, it just, it, again, it's, I'm, I'm looking out 20 and 30 years for some of this stuff. And so, some of, some of this stuff will, will be a little bit more clear when we do get to that long-term planning stuff. But absolutely.
Yeah, so that was confirming my, for some reason, I just had a pause there. But in, because it really is then, I'll stop that thought.
Well, I think it goes back to, again, right? Like, yeah, there's areas that we can cut. Parks, it's 5 million over the next 10 years, but the public works is 55 million, by far the most. The water, it, that's not going to be 61 million. That, some of that's going to be covered ideally by the 3M.
Most all of it.
Most all of it, right? So, although it's on this chart showing that it's the second highest, public works is 50, over 50%. I think that's where we focus then, right? That's where, and, and the roads seem to be a place that we can potentially do that. Yes, that might mean a road has to make it two more years and maybe not the greatest condition. But I think that's the, the balance we have to have. I'd love to have perfect roads for, for every single road, but it's just, we have to balance that with, well, what's the cost of it? And, you know, it's tough, but.
Well, that 55 million, about 30 million is tax levy. For either debt or direct spending. And so, it's, it's a big number. I just think that we have to, I'm with you. We think we have to take a look, how can we tame that down just a little and not do significant harm? But on the other hand, try and keep our tax levies to something manageable. And I'm not opposed to raising the levy, but I just want to, I just don't think we can go with the amount we're talking about.
We had a discussion a month ago or so where it came up where there was a possibility where some things were coming from the levy when it could potentially come from utility funds. And you were calling it out and you were surprised. Do you remember what that example was?
Well, the stormwater, we had a portion of, of stormwater being funded by levy rather than the stormwater fund.
Right, and the sewer was being funded by the sewer fund on the Hudson Boulevard, right? That was the discrepancy?
Yeah. And so, looking at those projects and maybe, maybe there's some additional funding could come from our enterprise funds. You know, understanding that the people who pay utility fees are not the same people who pay property taxes. Because we have exempts that, you know, pay those fees. And to the extent that we subsidize with property taxes, we put a bigger burden on our property taxpayers.
And in all transparency, I understand it's, it's shifting from one place to the other. It doesn't actually decrease the cost, but at least to try to make sure that it is originating in the correct place. Councilmember Hearn, I, I don't disagree. If, the, the hard part is over the last couple of years, the, the roads and the investment in the software and trying to get us back on track has probably been the, to me, the biggest improvement the council's been able to make for the city. So, I, I very much have a, it pains me to, to slow down on that. On the flip side, if a majority says that's what's going to happen, that's what's going to happen, I understand why. But we also know full well, we're not even investing the amount necessary right now.
Jack has something.
Yes, sir.
If I, I'd like to just talk a couple of minutes here about the CIP and the history of where we've been. And it feels like we're coming a little bit full circle from my tenure here. But, you know, if you, the county comes out with a CIP like this every year. And right in the beginning, the first thing they say is, the only projects that matter is the first year. Those are the only projects that they've identified they're moving forward with. Everything else is a planning tool. So, everything beyond 2026 is a planning tool. And every, next year, we'll come up with a revised CIP. And some of these projects will be off the list and some of the projects, or they'll be moved around based on what we're seeing out there. So, it's a moving target. It's a planning tool. And so, then it's more, it becomes more, because of the, of the planning tool, it becomes more of an art than a science of, of what you're doing. We, we just recently went to a 10-year CIP. And especially when it comes to the streets, projecting out 10 years of what project, you know, when, Councilmember Hearn says, you know, maybe we can drag it out two years, absolutely. We're not going to come forward and, you know, when we get within two years of a project coming out and we're looking at it and it's going to give two more years, in that year of the recycle, it's going to get backed off. There might be some project that's deteriorated faster that has to move forward, but there'll be a project that you push out because it's not, it's not needed. So, and when I presented this and, when, you know, when I presented this before, the first three to five years are, if you look on the ratings, there, there are roads that are in need of reconstruction right now, not, and.
And those are street, street improvement projects.
Some of those street improvement projects, they're in need right now and they're not being addressed for another five years. But you get beyond year six and seven. And I put projects on this list based on age of pavement and when the road was built. If you go out there and look at the condition of it, it doesn't look like it needs to be redone right now. And maybe it won't need to be redone in the year I programmed it. Alls I did was look at the year it was built and the age of that pavement and projected. You know, because we wanted to do a 10-year planning document, it was like, well, that road likely will be one we're looking pretty closely at at that point in time. But as we get closer, will we need to do it at that point in time? Will it have deteriorated or will we, you know, so, so it becomes very much of an art like that. So, can we push especially those later year projects out or, or off the list for now? Certainly, there's, there's projections like that. The other thing we've got in there, we have 10 to, we have $8 million in just three projects that are collector roads that could be done by developers. If development comes into the Fifth Street area, that could get paid for by development or partially by development or something like that. And we got.
That's something in the next few years?
Yeah, we, well, I put it at 2030, $4.6 million to build a portion of Fifth Street. If development comes in before 2030, the developer will have to pay 100% of that cost. It's, it's, I put it in there at 2030 because that's when that area opens up as a planning thing. And if nothing's happened by 2030, it's likely because developers aren't going to stomach that cost of that portion of the road. And the city might need to build that road to jumpstart development in that area. So, there's, there's real, there's a lot of guessing going on of, you know, like I said, there's $8 million in road projects and just three projects that very, based on past practice, will get built by developers. And you won't see any of that cost. But it's hard to, but it's hard to leave it off the list when you want a 10-year CIP and you want a planning document. Because you want to understand, you don't want to miss it. And then suddenly you do need to do it and, well, why wasn't that on the list? Why weren't we identifying that?
And I, I think that is the challenge, right?
Yep.
I guess, like you mentioned, it, it, this is not set in stone. These are going to change. So, one, my, my first inclination would be, well, then let's go the opposite way with it. Let's not put it on there. And then if we need it, then we can do it.
I think.
Well, the, the, the future stuff isn't impacting the current tax levy. So, really what you want to look at is, is 2026. And even if, like I said, in the street projects, like if you take, what was that? What's on the list? High, it was, what's that, Heights of Lake Elmo?
Uh, Lake Elmo Heights.
Yeah, I mean, those roads are absolutely destroyed, right? So, you look at 2.7, 2.9, 3.3, and then it drops back down to two, right? So, as we get to a place where the roads are in better condition, we take, I mean, there's a couple of roads off, was it 38th and 39th off of Jamica? Those are in horrible condition. If you want to look at something that might be able to get pushed in discussion would be this South Frontage Road, Keats to Lake Elmo Avenue.
So, I think, I mean, that, that's the, the discussion that I think needs to happen. And I, I said it poorly with those future ones. Maybe another way to say it is, I think if we're planning for those numbers, it's more likely that we move forward with that versus if we're planning for something less and then it comes in higher, we're going to look a little bit more stringently at it versus if it's, if it's already there, it's like, all right, we're ready to spend that.
Yeah, as I'm listening to this conversation over the course of this year, it's been a couple of them. I, I almost, it's like I want to keep two sets of books because I don't want to lose sight of projects that we might have to do. But when, when you're translating it into a long-term financial plan, there's maybe not 100% of these projects are 100% going to be needed at the time they are, so.
It's almost like when compiling the totals, because we do have a priority named for that. It's future consideration. It's priority five. It's almost as if when all the numbers are being compiled, it's like, here's the price tag for priorities one and two. Here's the price tag for priorities three and four. Over here is the fut, the, what you're talking about, the placeholders, the ones that, you know, they're.
They're fives.
Yeah.
The county projects are a, a classic example where we know the county's talking about those projects. They're programming their stuff, but we have no idea. If you go back two years, you'll find the Manning project that just started construction. We had 500,000 in there. Our, our cost here turned out to be $2,500, not 500,000. We have no idea what the cost here is going to be because we don't even know what the scope of the work is.
What is the Manning and Hudson stoplight? Can you remind me of that?
That's if they, that's if, that could be paid on Hudson and Manning is if the, Limer comes in. So, if Limer comes in, that'll get funded by Limer.
So, that's $300,000 in 2026. That might not happen, right?
And I think, I mean, that's probably where the conversation go here is like, well, okay, well, what about next year? And, you know, back to your, your point, maybe if you could just elaborate on a little bit as far as like, okay, some of these roads that are getting done in two to three years, that, like you mentioned, hey, they're ready now. They're scheduled three years out. Well, what happens if it's five, four years?
Right, and there's, if it's already needs to be reconstructed, it's just higher, higher costs in the next year based on construction costs going on.
And like, so the increase of material labor, increase of cost.
But there's some projects, as you know, we, we try to do a lower-cost reclaim. And sometimes if the road deteriorates to a point where a reclaim is viable now, but if you wait five more years, it's no longer viable. And now you're doing a reconstruct, which is three times the cost. So, there's, there are certain improvements you want to tackle within the right timeframe or they be, they escalate really quickly in more cost.
Because what was the total for 2026? It was for roads?
6.7.
So, I get, again, going, you're going to have a much better idea of which road needs it versus which doesn't. I'm trying to balance both sides of it, right? Like, from your perspective, you're thinking, obviously, the financials too, so I want to be careful about that, but.
Well, I would need to understand how the whole 10 years is playing into the.
Well, I'm just thinking just next year.
This year.
What can we do next year in the year, 2026, 2027, maybe 2028? With those road projects that are scheduled out in the next three years, how can we actually make that happen over five years?
You just, you just tell us to do them over five years and we do them over five years. And as residents complain, what, what your added cost is going to be pothole, repair, public work, staff. Sometimes they're patching roads and the patches get bigger. So, there is some expense. It's not.
Sure.
Not horrendous, but it's.
Okay. I, I guess, I mean, I'm open to hearing other thoughts on that too. I guess that's just, I, I'm trying to balance that.
Three to four years are all, if you look, they're all in the payment ratings, they're all failed roads. They all, they all need, the recommendation is to reconstruct them. There was one other point, point I wanted to talk about when I mentioned full circle. Because when I came here, what happened was a financial number was cited of how many, how much we can do in capital improvements per year. And that's kind of what the city had been doing every year. There was a limit, it was, you know, 10 million total projects. If there was a 2 million fire truck and a backhoe or, you know, dump truck or something like that, a plow, you'd back all that out and this is what you got left for roads or whatever. And we, for years, most of my tenure here, we backed into that number and we just did what we could with the amount that we were given. We, we overdid it that way because we fell behind quite a bit.
Sure.
The, it was kind of this council and the mayor's coming on board and stuff. It's like, we can't just keep backing into this. We need to find out what do we need? And what, and so that was part of the payment management plan, which is mostly maintenance and, and keeping up on the maintenance and, and not forgetting that.
Was that number changing?
I remember specifically one council member, or one council meeting during budget, watching it with my popcorn and my beer on a Tuesday night. They went through all the items.
Not on council at the time.
I was not on councils quite a few years ago, actually. And they went through and they got all the line items then, and they said, well, how much do we have left for roadways? And they said, "Jack, what can you do for $400,000?" "Well, we'll figure it out." And that's literally, that is like, in my opinion, the worst way to plan for your, your infrastructure. And I think Director Handler mentioned something about the assets of the city and the infrastructure being 100 million. I wouldn't be surprised if it's higher than that. I don't know if you use GAZI 34 modified method or straight-line method. I'm, I'm guessing straight-line. But it's a financial way to figure out what your investment is in your city relative to your infrastructure. It takes lengths and miles, includes curb and gutter, catch basins, manholes, inlets, all that stuff, right? So, I mean, there, there's some, like, when I look at this, there's probably $1.3 million next year. I mean, I've driven on Hudson, the South Frontage Road between Keats and Lake quite a few times just because I want to go see if that, that grass has started over there by the, the water tower or whatever. But, you know, that's something that could probably get pushed. It's not in very good condition, but it's not.
We're trying, and if you, again, if you go back previous years, you'll see that that's been programmed earlier. And we keep, we have pushed that a couple of years. We keep pushing it because the longer we can push it and get away with pushing it, the more likely, if Valley High comes in and redevelops, that gets done by a developer. But there's going to come a point where we can't push it anymore.
Right, yeah, so then it becomes our cost.
The only thing I would say is the path that we've been on has pushed us six, it's a $16 million outstanding debt and a debt levy each year to property taxes. 35% of our levy goes just to pay principal interest on bonds. That's just not sustainable. If we, if we keep down that path, $3.5 million goes just to pay, we have $5 million to operate the city and $3.5 million to pay principal interest on debt.
I'm not going to argue with you on that.
I mean, that just doesn't seem to make sense.
So, to, to highlight where we're at, because we're talking about streets in this case, which we do have a specific levy, if we're talking about South Frontage Road, Keats to Lake Elmo, which is programmed for a million in 2026, and we don't know if it's happening or not. That would be coming from the road levy? Or from the general levy?
It would be coming from the infrastructure fund, but largely actually bond proceeds. So, we still, depending on now, again, long-term planning, more discussion to come. So we still, depending on now, again, long-term planning, more discussion to come, um, but there's this, you know, how do we get from A to B? So my formula that I've kind of worked into the CIP planning is that we're trying to spend 30% of, of our total projects with, with cash, and then we supplement, uh, sorry, let me clarify. Depending on the type of project, it's a percentage of cash, some of it I was able to do sort of straight off, uh, 30%, some of them where we're working up to 30% over the next 10 years. And so it's, it, I had, I had to make some assumptions, but because we don't have a lot of cash on hand, the assumption is we're going to continue to take out debt until we have that fund built up, um, and, and are able to, you know, to, to move away from that.
So bond with some cash.
So the, the biggest impact that I think that moving that project back a year would be just lowering that.
300,000.
Future debt, that new future debt, right?
And 300 of cash.
Yeah.
Which project were you?
South Frontage Road.
Just, just as an example.
So that, that's likely to be paid by grant. Right now, as it stands, MINDOT's coming in to pay for that.
Oh, that's what that is, I misread that, sorry.
So those two projects, those two half and a millions to get, two and a half is the 5 million contribution.
Yep, that's right.
They're looking for us to trunk highway.
Right, so this is going to be done by MINDOT.
I mean, there is a city contribution, they're expecting a large city contribution toward that.
I'll give a dollar.
Five million, oh, 4 million in the CIP for CASA 17 as our cost share, right?
Yeah, and it's been 5 million from the beginning, and now the South Frontage Road is part of it, so we're, we're still paying the amount, but we're almost getting a big road improvement added in there since that all happened.
All right, I, I was looking at it and thinking it was referring to what you were just talking with Hudson.
I was, I was on the wrong Frontage Road, my mistake, sorry.
But, but as an example, the 300 for the, the stoplight Manning and Hudson, like, no, if, if Limerick does it, great, but I'm, we don't need to be.
We just don't know when it gets done, if there's some, the county will, either Limerick will lead that, or Limerick will provide cash to the county, and the county will do it, and they'll charge the city something.
Right.
So there's a budget in there for the city, it could be that thing where it turns out to be $2,500, so I, I don't know.
Yeah.
But so, there's a project we're aware of, it's ready to go, if Limerick goes, we don't know what our cost share is. Anything in the green is highly speculative in terms of the dollar amounts.
In which case, because again, no matter which fund it comes from, or if it's bond, and then there's a portion of cash, there's still, no matter what, could be some impact to our final levy rate, it's just, it's going to vary depending upon what the type of project is.
I, I would suggest the stuff in the orange, the, I mean, the Hudson Boulevards and the Fifth Street just come out, I mean, the other thing the city could do with Fifth Street, if you have to do it, is you, you, you could move that project forward and assess it 100% to those neighboring, those properties and force development, I mean.
Or 29.
Yeah, you can do, you know, you, you have the powers to do it that way and do it differently.
Many others do.
That's a, that 4.6 and Hudson Boulevard ones are ones that could essentially come out of the financial plan, if that's what's wreck, if that's partly wrecking havoc, but I don't want to lose sight of those projects being on the rise.
Right, you want to, you want to keep track of them. I get it.
So either way, there, there are many possibilities here for things that, obviously are in the 2026, where depending upon how it plays out, we may already have set our levy, but we're going to end up spending less, but the levy and what we collect is already coming in.
That's, that it's, that.
Yeah, because that's the hard part, some of these things may not happen, we, but we've already set the levy.
Well, except for it's not a, it's not a direct payment, so we are, we have an infrastructure fund, which we are planning for, to pay for a portion of, of future road projects, right? So that, and so think of your 500,000 dollars next year could pay for 100,000 dollars for the next five years or something, you know, it's not like this 500 is going to go for this project. And then the assumption is, because we don't have cash, that we would be taking out debt. And so that debt wouldn't affect the 26 levy, that would actually affect the 27 and beyond levy, so it's not a, you're not getting a one for one, it's not at all.
It's not immediate impact.
Correct.
So our, the predictions that we have, our debt service levy and our infrastructure levy in 2025 was 3.3 million. In 20, in 2032 is projected to be 5.9 million, we're going to double. If we keep on the path that we're on.
What are you looking at?
In the CIP, we have our debt, our debt service levy and our infrastructure levy.
What page are you on?
I, I'm on the, uh, the, the 2026 to 2035 Capital Improvement Plan.
Yeah.
We, we're neither, again, I don't know what page it is, it's, let's see, it's page.
Does it say page in the?
Uh, A170.
This letter thing is throwing me off. Yours just has numbers.
Yeah.
The page does it.
There we go.
So if you look at 2025, we have 3.3 million dollars in levy and, and debt service and infrastructure.
20.
And you go up to 2033, and you got 6.1.
11.
I'm sorry, can I come look at your computer?
Yeah, just make sure you guys are looking at the same thing.
Yeah. So it's almost double.
You're talking 25 to 32, I go from 3 point something to almost, you're talking about the debt service levy or the infrastructure levy?
The combined debt service and infrastructure levy.
Oh, sure.
The debt service is the biggest portion of it, so you go from 2025 to 2033, and it pretty much doubles.
Over eight years, yep. Before it starts to go down in 2034.
Yeah.
I would just reiterate, the reason that that is, is because we did not have capital levies in the past.
It dips down, but if, if you go out, when you get to.
Yeah.
It then goes back up, gets over seven and a half, seven and a half, 8 million dollars, actually.
You're still talking theoretical when you get out to that point, in my opinion.
Right.
It's a, it's a best guess.
Best guess, but you know, we, we talked.
But you're also talking about probably having, I don't know, what, what's our road miles in Lake Elmo now, 110?
99.
99? And what was it 10 years ago?
It was, it was still like 70 or something.
Yeah, so that's project, probably projecting out in those years, where you have more lane miles of road in developed areas, you're going to have to take care more, take care of more, even if developers build it, you still have to maintain it, right? So some of that increase is going to be based on just having more to take care of.
This is a maintenance, this is, we have, we have another 600,000 in maintenance.
So you're still, so then when you get out to 2040, you're looking at roads that you've, you're doing full-depth reclamation on roads that you did in 2020, right?
When we get to, when we get to say that the Savona Road's two, built in 2013, so you get to 2033, that 20-year, 20, or 2033 to 2038, so that 25-year period, you're not going to be rebuilding that curb and gutter, you're not going to be replacing the base, you're not going to be replacing the drain tile, you're going to come in and you're going to do a, a low-cost, either mill and overlay or a reclaim.
Right.
So for many, many years, then those new roads are going to, they're not going, you're not rebuilding those and replacing those full roadways, you're just replacing the top for another 25 years.
So I see what you're saying, Councilmember Dragasich, as that increases, but the increase isn't just as, you can't think of that as it is, as, as things are stated as they are currently, that has to account for increased amount of roadways that will have, that the city will have to take care of, right?
Understand, but I'm just saying, the tax, property tax impacts are going to be, in my view, our, Stanfield's level of impact increases.
Well, I'm not, I'm also not sure, I would have to have a question whether or not the numbers include basically a leveling out of, uh, the tax base number? If that was also increased along with that, is like, how many people are, how many households are paying into that tax, or is it, has that been also increased and stratified by year?
That would come more in the long-term planning.
Yeah.
Process, um, so if.
I mean, I can't, I can't answer that question, so.
I mean, the intriguing part with, because we saw this data before, but then the intriguing part is the debt, the debt service levy for that portion basically is remaining between 3 and 4 million for a 20-year span. It's the infrastructure levy.
Yeah.
Because we'll be, continue to be adding infrastructure.
But take the infrastructure levy, and you're going to have to fund it with debt and pay interest.
Correct.
It's, we're still spending the money.
Yep. Yeah, I, because like in, in 2040, our population will be between 18 and 20,000. So there's additional households there, there's additional roadways, there's additional costs, there's, we don't know what the tax capacity, we don't know how many businesses will be in here, I, all right, so the proposal is what?
Do we know what the total CIP is for 2026? I'm trying.
Sure I do.
25 million? That's all right? No, it's just water.
Handy. It's 34 million, but that includes the, uh, water treatment plant of 24, so roughly.
10 million.
So 10 million.
I, I mean, I guess my thought on this is, I guess it's kind of like a similar to what we've mentioned with the levy is, I, I, again, I guess we could go through this line by line and say what I think from the capital improvement plan that does, maybe needs to get cut, I don't know if that's the right way to do it, I think, I, I, I guess it's interesting that you guys have had an issue with that in the past, where, you know, you kind of have a, hey, this is the limit, and I get that, but I, I feel like we have a lot more, we have the pavement, um, plan in, in, in place here where we're able to make sure we're looking at this and, and, and make a shift if we see, okay, hey, 10 million for CIP isn't enough this year, we need to increase that limit to 12 million this year. I, I, I don't know if that flexibility was there in the previous councils when they had that backstop limit where it was 10 million and it stayed that way for 10 years and it never changed, I, I don't know, but.
Again, I'll re, the, so the, the street rating and pavement management plan is programming out your maintenance dollars, so that's that 600,000 maintenance dollars, and that's making sure you stay on top of that to, to extend the life of the pavements. That's, that's trying to work toward your goal of not doing these, these, uh, major improvements quicker.
The backstop was for the budget, or was it for the CIP?
Budget.
I'm sorry, I thought you, before you were talking about the backstop for the CIP.
Yeah, and so then for the CIP, as I've mentioned, I can tell you the first five years in your CIP right now, from an engineering perspective, all need to be reconstructed today, even though we're not doing them, we're doing them over the next five years, but they all need to be done today.
I guess, again, my question is, well, what happens if we do it over seven years? What if we do it over eight years? I, I know that means there's some maintenance costs that are additional.
Right, you just keep.
And so I.
It becomes that balance that you said.
So I guess that's my ask as one council member, is I'd like to see, as we look at the CIP in general, that number come down, again, if you want me to give a number, I think it should come down closer to probably 25% from what we're at, looking at in 2026, and then I think in general, over the next 10 years, even though it is, like you said, in art and there, there is a lot of fluctuation to those, I'd rather err on the side of it being too low and having to make a decision the year before that we need to increase that CIP as we get closer to it, rather than the opposite. I, I, I'm concerned that if it's, we keep it at this, the higher limit, that it's going to be easy in future years to say, well, ma- maybe we need a little bit more, it's just going to bump up from there, I don't see it coming down by any means. So that's my feeling on it with the CIP, I, I would like to see that number come down, I think it's going to be the opposite end of, or it's going to be the other part of the equation of getting to that 20 mil, or to 30 million of debt in the next 20 years, is instead of just increasing revenues, we have to slow down the increase of expenses, I think that's a big piece of it, and I think that needs to be a, a portion of it, and I think the easiest way to go, the most efficient way to go about that is looking at these capital improvement projects and decreasing that, because again, I, I don't think going through the budget line by line is going to, those are, it's the, the sand, right? These are the rocks, this is going to move more, move us, it's going to move the needle more for us, and so I think focusing on this and the CIP is going to help a lot with, so we don't have to ask for 500,000 for the, the capital expenses in the levy, we can drop that to 300,000 for the parks, so we don't have to have 100,000 dollars levied for parks, we can levy 50,000. And so we can maybe still get there in 20 years, but it's because we're working from both ends.
So essentially, Cliff note, you would, your suggestion would be, you know, of our 600 that is set aside for road maintenance, reduce it by X amount.
Not maintenance.
Not the maintenance, so only for the capital improvement side.
Correct.
In which, most of that is debt.
Yep.
And some is cash, all right.
Most of it is debt. I think I remember is that, you know, our newer developments where people bought homes, the cost of all those improvements were included in their lot, and so the streets, whatever you have, right, they paid for in their lot. The improvements now, and that's where the bulk of the value is in the community and the new developments, the improvements now, 70% are paid by a tax levy, and so the new, the people who bought new homes are paid for theirs in their lot, and they're paying for everybody else's in their tax levy at a higher rate because the homes are higher valued.
That's just, that's just the circle there, I mean, we could exactly talk about that in the development that I moved into or you moved into, right? I've been paying for other people's roads in my tax levy while my road turned into Street Baghdad until it was, uh, recon, re, reconditioned a year ago. And it's, it was severely under maintenance, it didn't get chip sealed, it didn't get what it needed, could have probably, uh, didn't, you didn't have the, uh, you didn't have some of the drainage pertinences in there to, to make it last that long, so, um, but it could have lasted longer if it would have been maintained appropriately.
I'm talking about the maintenance side.
No, I'm, I'm telling you, that when I moved in that house, my streets were great. And so when you're doing an infrastructure levy and you're, you're, you're paying for all these other roads to get done, that, I was paying part of that, even though my road was great, that's just part of being society. That's part of being a community.
It is, I understand that, but we're probably raising levy 20%, and then, and, and a good piece of that, 30% is going to fix streets, it's, it seems somewhat disproportionate.
Have you gone out and looked at the streets that are in the 2026?
I have not, no.
All right, well, I, I would ask you to go do that.
Maybe we need to raise the assessment levy to cut down on the amount being tax levied.
Um.
Go from 30% to 50%.
In the, in the start of my career, assessments were closer to 75, 80% was the average city, they were assessing like that.
Yep.
In my opinion, the, it's, it's the fact that they, you have to prove out the assessments through appraisal values, that, that's the part of the process that's broken.
Yep.
And cities found, the reason everybody dropped significantly, and many cities went to no assessments at all, um, the reason they did that is because they were spending way too much money on every project doing appraisals, I mean, the appraisals, if you have to do 10, 12 appraisals, they, they, they're 15, 20 grand apiece, um, they're more than the feasibility studies, they were, um, they, they become very high cost and you were spending more time fighting those off. So that's when you, if you look, if you pull the cities now, you're seeing them all around the, the 30% or 25% assessment rates, but that's why it happened, but they were, they were much higher when I started my career.
So would, would your idea have the five, the next five years be done? So would, would your idea have the five, the next five years be done in seven?
I mean, I think that's, again, I, I wanna, it's more asking staff to come back. With that may be the idea, again, I, I don't know if that's feasible, and I'm kind of asking the same thing for the, the budget is. I'm not comfortable with this number, I'm comfortable with half, you know, ten percent increase for the levy. I think I'm comfortable with maybe seven point five million for twenty twenty six instead of ten million for CIP. I think I'm more comfortable with maybe like half as much being spent on roads, I, I don't know. I don't know how, which specific items to take out.
Yeah, well, and, and I think engineering is telling us, they want a policy decision. If we want to say.
So I guess my.
Take five years and do it over seven, he then figures out what theirs are gonna be, but they, they want a policy decision.
Yeah, well, and I think, I don't know if this is a policy decision, but I just think from the financial perspective. If anything, that would be the policy of like, this is how much is available to spend. And, and if that means doing it over seven years, what we had planned for the next five, fantastic. If it can be done over eight, great, I, I don't know what that looks like, but I, I think we do need to decrease that number. And, and there needs to be some, and, and maybe it can't be twenty five percent. Decrease in twenty twenty six and maybe it can't be. A half as much on, or spreading what we have planned for the next five years over seven years for roads, but I, we need to at least move in that direction.
Well, I, I, so here's a policy idea. To overwork staff. Maybe suggestion one, what would be the impact to the levy if the next five years of CIP roads were done over seven? Option two, is it possible to somehow decrease, you said twenty, twenty five percent for.
For twenty twenty six, and it doesn't have to be from roads, but again, if we're looking at, well, what's the biggest chunk of it?
Yep.
Okay, that's a large chunk, so I think roads is, is, is a place that we can look, I wanna be very mindful of. There's been a lot of great work done with the pavement and, I, I, that's why I feel a little more comfortable doing this as well is because we have. The pavement index, we have a, we have this plan where we're.
We do.
Reviewing constantly and we're using to make these decisions where that wasn't happening.
We do.
Years ago and it, you know, it's, it's easier to fall behind when you, we're not constantly seeing those numbers.
I mean, the hard part for me is that index is telling us these roads suck and they need to be replaced now. That, that's, that is entirely true, we have that. But I, I think, yeah, they can come back when we do our next workshop. If five years and seven, what does that look like, and if it looks great, great, we're gonna be warned. Jack isn't gonna tell us, here's the consequences and the risks. While the roads are gonna turn into a full reclaim.
We have, uh. Four, five, six hundred thousand dollars in park play equipment. To be redone next year, so do you straddle those out, maybe do two instead of three?
I mean, I'll.
And stretch that out over three, four years?
At the parks meeting, I, I, that's a big item that I'm gonna bring up, I don't know if we spend that at all, I, I just, I think we have to look at. Is, what's getting used, this is the discussion for that, but I, yeah, I, I think that is an area that could potentially be lowered, but. I get nervous about going line item by line item again.
I mean, for, for my value, I mean, I've used the, the pup park, I don't know that it, you know, that's fifty thousand dollars of paving. You had a new park pavilion at eighty thousand dollars for the next five years, do you do one every other year? Maybe that's something you look at.
So I think there's a lot of items like that, and, and that's a perfect example of. Yes, it would be very nice to have, but our city is still gonna survive and thrive without that. And, and so this is where, hey, maybe the roads isn't the right place to focus, but we need to, we need to do some. In my perspective, I, something needs to happen to decrease these numbers.
Sure. I would, I would be fine. You can play around with, with any of them really, it's just where you wanna. Where, where it kind of makes sense. For the short term and the long term of the city and you just, you gotta make that balance, right, so.
And I don't, I mean, is that something that we need to decide right now, I mean, obviously the CIP gets brought back. I think my thought again is if we give staff direction of ten million is too much, seven point five million. Is more on track. We have this initial CIP, we're gonna build a contrast with a, a CIP at seven point five million. It can be highlighted what was taken out and, and then it, you know, and then if it's like ouch, that really hurts that we don't have those items.
So what we also ask then is when we start looking at fleet and stuff, do you do it every, you know, the recommended years? Stretch out on another one, two years or whatever. What do you, so then you get into some of the, the swag stuff, right, where you're saying, well. Yeah, I'll put that many more miles on it and our maintenance will go up a little bit, but we won't have to get a new, but then the new vehicle. Three years later is gonna be X amount more, right, so I don't even know if you're, you're gonna catch up with that number. Or even when you delay some of the construction stuff. I don't know if you catch up with that number either sometimes. So it, it can be, I know that when a lot of these bonds were taken out in the mid. Teens, right, I don't know what bond rates are, but they were really freaking low, right? I know like two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, they were like one, one and a half percent.
I don't think in ten they were quite that low, but there was a period where they were, where they were fairly low.
Yeah, I mean, we were doing as much construction as we could in the county that I worked because it was like. I mean, it wasn't free money, but it was darn close compared to the rates of, of. Oil going up and mix going up and, and hourly wages and stuff, so. Yeah, it's, it's not an easy answer.
No, it's not, Mayor, but we have to find a balance that's.
Yeah.
Sustainable.
As an example for the, I mean, as I mentioned, the twenty twenty six, the first year is the year that you're giving direction to go forward with, so. Right. You're talking about that ten million, we're already working on all those projects, so. We would need to know very quickly if we're not supposed to be working on them, but they're, they're basically spoken for, you got the stormwater pond is. In a contract with Gagne, so you're gonna pay them when that's done, and that's the biggest bang for your buck you're getting. The water treatment plant is gonna be reimbursed by grant, and then you have the trunk highway thirty six is a two and a half. Million dollar one, so that's your biggest one.
You can't back that one up.
So it's really only your street project for twenty twenty six, pausing that is really the only. On the infrastructure projects, I'm not, I'm not talking about parks or. Equipment or vehicles or things like that, but really, it's just the twenty twenty six street improvement project is the only one you could defer.
And if we defer it, then next year we have to defer that one as well, so everything gets pushed back here, so like, again, I want to be clear that I understand that. And if that's just a no go, I. That's alright, I. If it's possible, I wanna move in that direction though.
You know, I think it's important to point out that we talk about CIP being a long range plan document, it's not etched stone, and that, all that is true. Except in twenty twenty five, we said, let's go ahead with the twenty twenty six improvements. And so, you know, the, or we have, you know, like in the case of our fire truck, we moved it up. And so, and every time we talk about what was in the CIP, so we kind of play both sides of that CIP.
Well, but I.
It's not etched stone, but it was in the CIP.
I would also say that those weren't just because it was in the CIP, I think we had a fairly good discussion related about. The future costs and waiting on that and how much that increased the cost of those vehicles by waiting to order, right, so it's. It's not just because it was in the CIP.
I understand.
I don't feel as, as it was stated, so. I, 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 I don't remember, wha- what are the other roads in the twenty twenty six? Street improvements, I, I, I know I've driven the ones at the, the.
Lake Omaha Heights.
Lake Omaha Heights.
It's the only neighborhood.
That's the only one?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, if. I encourage council members to go take a look at that, that development. And if you think that can be pushed, then bring it forward, I certainly will not be. I, 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 I've been on those roads and I would not concur with any delaying that project at all.
I mean, do you feel like within the next two years, we can get to a point where we're. Moving more in this direction of slowing down?
It will be, I mean, there are some roads like, it, it, just go drive it, swear. You'll understand, there's that, roads like thirty eighth and thirty ninth off of Jamica. That they're in disrepair and not only. Not only are they gonna cost the city more, the longer you wait, well, actually, those roads are just gonna cost because they, they were waited so long. And so we, we will be at full reconstruct on those. But I think when we get to some of the ones that are maybe. Might have a little bit more of a question mark, that's when you get to say, let's, let's push that, right, cause you, cause you can.
And that's like in the five to ten year window, it's not next year, it's not.
Well, Hudson, Hudson Boulevard, we've pushed two years now already, we've pushed them both, so they've been in the closer windows and we've been pushing them back. Each year we keep looking at them, we're, we, you watch the freeze thaw cycle over that winter when it's in that next year, and then you look at it right away in the spring. And if you can push it, we've, we've pushed it.
So it's, and it, I mean, I guess when I'm looking at it, like the roads, the, the, the two that I mentioned. It's not just the roads themselves are, are really bad, but then, you know, our maintenance vehicles have to go try and plow that well. And you're tearing up roads and you're beating up your plows, you get your belly scrapers in there. It's not good if they're hitting manholes or whatever could be in the roadway at that point. Um, so that there, there's potential costs, they're not saying that there is specifically, but like the. Yeah, some of the frontage roads and stuff, when I drive them, seat of the pants, if it, if it came up, I'm like, well, it's drains out to the ditch. It's fine, doesn't need to be done, right? It's not a lot of resident traffic on it, it's, you know, there, there are gonna be those instances come up. This next year, I don't believe is one of them.
I think no matter, no matter what, cause this is a workshop, we're not making any decisions, but either way. Between now and the end of the year, we also all, I think, have a responsibility to make sure we're communicating with the public about. What the costs are, cause I think for years and years, that has not been done. Which is why there is sticker shock when it increases, right, there's this expectation that taxes can be low. And all, everything's hunky dory, and that, that's simply not true. Things cost money, especially services that people expect, people expect police and fire, they expect roads that don't suck. They expect to have parks that are maintained, where trash is taken out, where the, they actually drain properly, where they have amenities. These things cost money, so I, we, again, we're gonna continue this conversation as to what the final percent will be, but. I think we all have an obligation to make sure we're communicating, cause there is a. City finances are a career in and of themselves that require higher levels of education and smart people to do it. And I, I, I think we all have an opportunity because of. What we see day to day, what we now are aware of, I think we have an opportunity to make sure we're communicating that to the public to help. Ensure that everyone's on the same page as to what the costs are. Why does chief need these additional people is to protect people's lives. Why are we investing in these roads, because it saves money in the long term, it's those conversations I think we do need to have, but I. Is there anything additionally you need for this year, I, I feel like we've given a lot of feedback, but I don't know if they're. You've been informed, we'd like to reduce costs, but we've also been clear as mud again.
You okay over there, Adam?
Stop laughing.
How do you really feel?
Well, to recap, I heard you say, um, look at the street projects over the next five years and see if you can stretch them to seven.
As an idea, not, not cause I agree with it, but as something we can come up with and, and see what does this look like, as, as one possible idea.
Yeah, but just for a direction for staff for the next time we meet, you mentioned something about the parks. And so I was just pulling up, you know, uh, we have this parks master plan, which has recommendations and obviously then the parks commission reviewed it. And came forward with their recommendations, so are you, you just mentioned it, but are you asking? For us to relook at, um, like the park replacement or the shelter additions or? We need a little direction.
It's worth looking at if we wanna reduce capital costs to reduce levy and future debt. That we need to look across the board. You know, as, as it was said, things that are nice to have versus things that are needed and maybe push the things that are nice to have. Maybe space them out a little bit to make that less of a. Stark contrast to, uh. Increases.
The playgrounds to me are, are that prime example.
Well, so it seems to me that that would, you'd probably kick it back to the parks commission with some directions. Cause you'd probably don't wanna just add them and Marty just deciding, right, I mean, we wanna include them, they can make the right decisions.
No, we have a workshop with them.
We do, I just, that wasn't exactly, we can't, that'll be a, a specific item, that wasn't.
Sure.
You know, so we can have more specifics, so that's something that we would include at that workshop with them, the joint one. That's.
I think that's the idea.
I think the goal you hit on the head is, what can we do to minimize that, understanding if those streets, if you have, if they're in that bad condition, we need to do them.
Yeah.
You know, we don't wanna cuddle things that we need to do, but, um, but we have to find a way to massage this and get it to a little bit better number that. Is more financially sustainable.
Well, and I think if, one, if we can't do it. Through the CIP, then it goes back to the, the budget, and then it has to come out of there somewhere else then. And, and again, my goal is if, if we can decrease the capital expense levy, the five hundred thousand dollars that we have in the, the budget. If we could decrease that to three hundred thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand, if we could decrease the parks levy to fifty thousand or twenty five thousand. Those are some big chunks taken out to get to that one million dollar less in the budget.
So, so just a question, just trying to understand, so you indicated. What, what, what was the percentage increase this year, is twenty, twenty percent, was that it?
So the, the tax amount was twenty, twenty one percent increase, the amount taxed.
And so.
Or the, um.
And this is just a, so you said I'd be more comfortable at ten percent.
Which would.
So, so I'm just wondering how you get to, what makes you feel comfortable at ten percent, what? What makes that decision, I guess, is it just a number?
I feel more comfortable with the three percent.
Right.
Of a tax rate increase, which would be closer to, you know, that'd be increasing our, our tax base by even more than. It'd be less than a ten percent increase in the.
Sure, yeah.
The tax levy. I feel like I'm trying, maybe this is the, the bad approach to try to meet in the middle, but. I'm trying to balance, yes, I, I understand that we're a growing city, I understand that maybe we've undertaxed in the past and we have to do some catch up for that. I have a really hard time stomaching a, a twenty percent increase, knowing that we're also probably gonna have to do that again next year, and it's gonna keep on going in that direction. I'd rather more gradually work there. There isn't an exact science where it's gonna get us to a specific dollar with a ten percent.
So when we do that gradual and. Director Handler, you can correct me on this, so if we do the more gradual. Then that takes us longer at reducing the debt, which is what your hot button seems to be, right?
I think we have the franchise fee and if we have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar, I'll just pick up a number, right, infrastructure levy, we can take five hundred thousand off of debt. For the twenty twenty six roads, you know, because we have that five hundred thousand dollars in those funds. We have the levy and the franchise fee, so we can reduce that, which will help, and maybe next year we can get the infrastructure levy. You know, up another hundred thousand, and so I think we kind of work our way, we're not gonna get there as fast as we'd like to, but we do have a plan. And maybe in twenty twenty seven, we can raise it even more, I, I, we don't know enough about it, I just think that, I'm with council, I think. Twenty one percent is a real hard pill to swallow.
It's a big number, don't disagree, so then. When you said, don't look at the CIP, but I think the CIP works in concert with the budget to a degree. So I don't think you can look at one without, you can't look at the budget, I think, without looking at the CIP.
Yes.
Or I was saying, if, if we can't change the CIP for twenty twenty six, if it's just, hey, there's nothing to be moved there, everything's on contract and.
Then there's not moving, much moving in the, in the budget unless you, you're looking at those, what I would call nickel and dime line items.
Cola.
So, so if you, if you, if you go cola to, from a three to a two point seven, which I think is fair and, and, you know. You're talking, again, smidgens, that's not gonna get you that. You're talking again, smidgens, that's not gonna get you that number.
Take the five hundred thousand down to two hundred and fifty thousand, take the parks of a hundred down to ten thousand.
Yeah, so then, so then it's just a question of would you. You lengthen that time to try and play catch up to where you have the money to pay cash for things, right?
I just don't know how much it would lengthen it, because if if we look at it. If we also look at the CIP at the same time and say, we we can't spend five million dollars per year. On or eleven million dollars on public works per year over the next ten years. We have to decrease that, if we can decrease that amount, we're not accruing as much debt.
Yeah.
We're increasing revenues, so we're going from both ends, right? Yes, if we didn't decrease expenses, it's gonna take longer.
Yeah.
But if we increase revenues, not as much as was shown in the budget, but we also decrease the expenses. Yes, from the budget if possible, but also. Looking at the CIP and saying, okay, we can't spend this much, we have to decrease that somehow and roads are a really big portion of. Of that every single year and and with the debt and so. Is that the easiest place to go? Maybe, but maybe not, right, maybe it has to be somewhere else, maybe it's the parks and the playgrounds, but it needs to happen from both ends.
Well, it could be fleet, it could be a lot of things.
Hundred percent.
I think you look at, first you look at some of those, you know, one time expenditures that are in the budget, can we can we postpone them or put them off? Do we really need to have that one time expenditure? I think the thing we talked about, you know, firefighters and and the public work staff, I think we need to do those things because that's that's the core of our operation. But but if we can take a look in capitals, one time expenditure, so we take a look at those one time expenditures. And if there's some increase in operations that we say, well, you know, do we, can we trim this a little bit or do it? It's it's not an easy task, I don't disagree, but I think there's a way to get it down and tens of tens of go K number, maybe twelve. I think twenty one's a little more than we should bite. But I don't wanna make stupid decisions either. And my thought was, you know, the staff knows this better than we do, we can give guidance and I can look line by line and say, what about this, what about this, what else? But if we have five five people doing it, all we do is inundate the staff with what about this and what about that questions.
Right.
And so my thinking was, they're smart people and, you know, what what can we do, what would you suggest we could do to bring this down to something more palatable?
So that would be my suggestion to be looking at the goals, because we don't know um which goals you want us to slow down on. And we can, and I know, I I know it's it's long, but I don't think it would take that long. As a group of staff, if we went by goals and we could kind of blurt out what we've included in our budgets, working on this goal. And then, just so you know, and then you say, no, let's not do that this year.
Right.
I mean, a lot of it's contract services, to be honest with you, or, you know, so.
Pull it up.
Okay. It's on the screen, how do I get it up there?
Hi, that's a good question.
I'm gonna ask for a point of privilege for a restroom and water refill. Five minutes, okay? A lot of you guys are figuring that out.
Get hold of yourself here.
Oh, I want water.
I will.
Does this thing do something?
Everyone was thinking it.
Maybe.
The the playground conversation, I think, is more for the parks.
Yeah.
Council meeting of like, what do we wanna prioritize with that money? Is probably, but that's a good point that like, again, that's not gonna be something that's gonna really change. The budget or the levy amount or how much debt we're accruing in the short term, potentially in the future, cuz it's more parks.
Okay, so the first one, I just, the develop the master plans, including community engagement for the seventy seven acres and the existing one eighty acres. I'll say um for um the community engagement for the seventy seven acres. I did get a price from that National Community Survey, we've talked a lot about doing statistically sound survey when we get to the point of having some. Something to ask the community about and so that is that um since I'm not there, I don't have the exact number, but it's like twenty, between twenty and thirty thousand. So if you wanted to slow down and say, let's slow down on this process and not think about doing a survey. We can push that away, but also.
To clarify. A statistically significant survey for the one eighty, not for the ball fields.
No, this is for the ball fields.
Okay.
But it's 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 a whole survey to get um a statistically sound survey that talks about ten facets of livability. So you get a whole bunch of other information and then we would customize questions specific to the seventy seven.
So multitasking.
Correct, but I know that um in community developments um budget, they have a lot of stuff for um contract services for planning. Um, for this and I have to have Jason help me for what about approximately for the seventy seven acres and the one eighty that we should expect for next year.
Right, so we have budgeted sixty thousand for the ball fields and that's going through the entire planning process in twenty twenty six. We had, we've talked to a couple of people, if we wanna do the full financial study, which is gonna be important in terms of. What type of revenue you can generate and what do you wanna replace, and we're gonna talk about this more in September, but a lot of the associations are talking about. Artificial turf and these sorts of things. That group will come in, it costs about fifty thousand dollars, but they'll put together a full plan, study, uh, financial feasibility. And get it ready for a referendum, if you do wanna bring it to a referendum, also community engagement. So that's budgeted right now, so the question is just, do you wanna stay on track for that? Because I think the next referendum is twenty twenty six and if we miss that one, it's twenty twenty eight, I believe, so.
Right.
And then what about the one eighty acres?
Well, that one's going forward, that one is a lot less, that's just thirty thousand for appraisals and all the predevelopment to get that ready. As you know, we budgeted some this year, but we have a grant to cover half of it, so.
That's that's the U L I.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Component.
All right, um, uh, number two, I don't think we really have any specific items, but number three, the comprehensive financial strategy. And the multiple long term goals, that is our next item on the agenda, but Clarissa can maybe, you might as well just speak to that now if it's okay.
Yep, um, and Councilmember Dragusich had pointed out, I had kind of forgotten that was in my budget this year, so I budgeted fifty to be safe, but in um discussions with consultants. Um, and staff, we think that we can do that internally and get it down to closer to ten.
Okay.
Number four, um, the future Musa, well, we all know that we're embarking on a three year um program starting right now. We're gonna need contract services to help us get us ready for the comprehensive plan, so Jason, do you have kind of a ballpark on what you find them?
Total, it's about one twenty five, I've talked to a couple of other cities, they're around that too, so.
We can't just tell Matt Council to go take a hike. I'm joking.
For for the whole three year process, one twenty five?
One twenty five, one fifty, but right now we're at one twenty five, but what I'm hearing from other cities is around one fifty max.
Okay.
Um, communications, we don't have anything specific to that, I've developed old fire station site, can you talk about?
I mean, we're doing well, we've we've received uh proposals today, today was the deadline, we're going through them, so we're moving forward. One of the things we talked about is if there's any kind of business um incentive going through that process. So hopefully we'll close in February, just in case it gets dragged out a little bit with environmentals and business subsidy.
There's no real expansives in the twenty twenty six budget relative to that, though, correct?
They're minor, we budgeted for environmental and we received a grant for the full environmental costs and then um. Just, we should have everything done by this year in terms of, we do need to get an appraisal.
But nothing in the twenty twenty six budget showing tonight was.
Yeah, so hopefully it'll be done by twenty twenty six.
Um, Chief, for number seven, did you have anything planned for this?
Yeah, in twenty twenty six budget, we had a G I S response or location study for a potential cell station. That was thirteen thousand dollars, we could definitely defer that as long as we feel like we need to and we could start having conversations. I don't think, um, you know, if you look at available land in the south end of town of where you could pin a new station, the hypothetical station. There's really only a handful that truly makes sense just by looking at a map. I don't know if, you know, necessarily the study's gonna tell us a whole lot of the difference in that, other than give us the actual data. To say, this is what response times look like, this is what things look like, I think that's definitely a cost we could defer or look at.
Do you remember like about how much that was?
That was thirteen thousand.
Oh, thirteen thousand, okay, okay. All right, number eight, so that's um kind of the next item as well, uh, one of your goals was to assess, analyze and assess water, sewer and street light fees. So the street light fees internally, we've started working on, um, as staff has more time, we'll pick that back up, it's not anytime soon, but. Been collecting data from other cities, how they do it, so forth, but um for the other studies, um, we did have. Clarissa's worked a lot with Nate, our engineer about this, so I guess um if you wanna know anything else.
Similar to the last discussion, so we had initially tentatively budgeted fifty thousand dollars as we were pulling together data and. Um, we would decrease that to twenty five thousand, that would be split between water, the water and sewer funds. So would not affect the levy, by the way.
Sorry, Stedion?
That would not affect the levy, cuz it's coming out of the water and sewer funds.
Got it.
All right, I'm gonna need some help on this next one. This, well, the staffing appropriate for desired service levels. So that's clearly where we're coming from with our captain ass.
Yeah.
And then um uh in the admin budget and again, the email that I sent you all about looking at the. Public works wages and market adjustments as well as looking at the entire staff as well, so. I did, uh, I think I put in there about thirty thousand dollars, now we're getting quotes from um consultants to do that and they're coming in a lot less. We're not looking at throwing away the study that was done by Baker Tilly, but kind of uh.
As this, you know.
Like revamping.
Back in the day, I don't know that they were very helpful.
What was that?
I'm just kidding, I'm jabbing.
Well, I did reach out to them for a little refresh and I have not heard back.
Okay.
I don't know, are they still in that line of business? Maybe Councilmember.
Maybe a refund.
Do you, do you know, do they still do the class and compensation?
By knowledge, they do, they got on the executive search, I know, recently, but I I they're um paying class stuff, it's actually headed up out of Texas. I can touch base with someone there if you need a hand.
Well, so I did reach out twice to see if we could work with them for a little customer service, a little refresh of it, um, but I haven't heard back, so. But otherwise, we've been uh researching and having meetings with other companies that do it and it's. So far, they're coming in a lot less than that thirty thousand, right, is to work with what we have now, um, instead of just redoing it all, so that's, so that's that. Do we have, we don't say anything about number ten on the slides, no, I don't think so. Number eleven, um. Yeah, I guess. Thank you. Start development process for one eighty acre parcel that we already talked about that, improve G I S mapping, you know, as part of switching to Bolton and Mink this year. We um are getting G I S, um, but I, staff will have to help me if there's any other additional costs that they had in their budget for something additional with G I S. Do you guys know?
That was part part of the whack and sack. Fee study was going to be having them. Review sort of some of the fixed asset stuff, so there might be a little bit, but that would be related to that other.
Okay.
We did have a fourth, uh, quote me, four thousand dollars for the Beehive asset for Parks Layer. That does incorporate um G I S as far as assets management and work orders.
Yep. Explore and develop plan for future of Old City Hall, I don't believe there's anything in this budget that's, uh, you know, we're gonna have a workshop this year still about that in October, I believe it is, so.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in the budget for that.
And then adopt the CIP to include deferred maintenance on three buildings and Clarissa talked about that a lot with our buildings, so. Hopefully that was a little helpful, do you have any other questions?
Was someone gonna say something?
No, go ahead.
I mean, I guess my first thought after hearing that is, you know, I wish I would have wrote all those numbers down that we said. I mean, I guess my first thought after hearing that is, you know, I wish I would have wrote all those numbers down that we said, because the total is probably under five hundred thousand dollars, so maybe the question is, you know, which of these do we need to focus on? Well, okay, if we're spending five hundred thousand dollars of twelve million on these goals, well, what about the other eleven and a half million? Like maybe that is actually what it needs to be focused on for where we're looking to cut, I mean, if this is five hundred thousand dollars of the budget on our top priorities, can we look elsewhere?
Well, we have, you know, we start with operations as of today to continue all the services we're providing and what that will cost us next year, so that was our base, and then we add on things to achieve your goals. So I don't know where else, we need specific direction on where.
So if this was five hundred thousand, and I I think I'm being conservative on that, I don't think the numbers that you gave as we were going through these was even totaling five hundred thousand dollars, where's the two million dollar increase? Where's the other million and a half coming from? Of increase from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six?
Six hundred thousand roughly for personnel, me actually. Trying to remember where I had, I had like three different, three different computers going.
Was it in your memo or?
Page five of my memo has a table with the personnel changes, so if you, if you wanted to refer to your packets in my memo on page five, there's a. You're way down at the bottom here.
Oh, okay.
Why is the page number not coming up down at the bottom? That's bizarre. There you are. So changes in the expense categories, so you've got over uh just over six hundred thousand in personnel, so that includes that three percent COLA, step increases and the additional staff.
So that's a large.
And I wouldn't be able to break it out as far as, you know, what's what's what, I don't remember. Do you know off the top of your head, Dustin, how much your captains were for the first year?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but the range is ninety to one twenty one, so I don't know what that equates to with uh when we add in benefits.
I mean, and and that's for the total for the year, if I had to guess roughly a third of each.
It goes, it goes from six eighty seven uh for this year to nine oh one next year, so roughly a hundred and thirteen, fourteen thousand um for a half a year, right?
Yeah, because they're six months.
Yep.
Right. Uh so materials and supplies um jumped up, I, so part of that's I T, so we've got computer replacements, um so we could certainly look at that, but that's a twenty-three thousand. Charges and services, a lot of contract services in there, so um all of our consultants, um so a lot of these studies that we were talking about come right out of there, so that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar change, most of it is some of these, this goal.
And I think, I mean, just like when you guys were going through the goals, there was, at least the ones I caught, fifty-three thousand of it, where you just during that discussion, you said, yep, we can cut that immediately.
We can cut, yeah. Yep.
Okay, so there's fifty-three.
And then um contingency, we we never use this, I literally just use it as a often a balancing thing. One other thing we need to, I need to work into the long-term plan, some of the things like not budgeting as high for for interest and some of the contingency, we need to make sure that we maintain that um general fund policy, so that fifty sixty, fifty to sixty percent, we're well over that right now, but in the future, we just need to kind of maintain.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Dragicic.
I have another thought, how we can get that twelve percent, I mean twenty-one percent down, um and still accomplish some of these things? And maybe for some of these one-time expenditures that we we think we really need would benefit for us, take it from fund balance. Spends, we have twelve mil- twelve million dollars in general fund balance, if we were to take five hundred thousand from there for somebody's one-time expenditures, we could reduce that impact considerably, along with some of the other changes we've talked about, and still get those things done. Even if we had, even if I had to take a million, we're talking about eight percent of twelve million dollars, it's it's not a huge thing, but it will allow us to get the necessary things done and not raise taxes twenty-one percent.
We we could use some cash funds that we have, um sometimes that uh you would know better than me how that affects your your rating, right?
Well, you know, we have, we have more in our, we have more than a year's of expenditures in our general fund cash, so we have very, very well funded. I know that, I mean, it's been over a year since I read the Moody's comment, but they comment on our level of cash. But I think, I don't know that that would necessarily drag us down a lower rating, it's, because there's a lot of other factors that weigh into it.
Yeah.
I I I don't think that's, I I understand that that could be a solution for this year, but I think it puts us in the same situation for next year. I think this goes back to, I mean, you even said it. We're maintaining what we spent last year and then we're gonna add to that, and that's what happens every single year, we add, we don't take away.
But Matt, it's not a one-time expenditures, not ongoing.
We didn't decrease our expenses at all, so we're gonna be in the same situation next year.
Well, you, no, he's saying so that you're like your contract services that you're paying.
But our budget for this year is twelve million, if it passes.
But it's still adding in, the contract services are added into that, those are the one-time expenses.
The one-time contract for something that comes.
A one-time contract, not the ongoing contract, one-time, our financial plan, long-range financial plan. Maybe, you know, some of the things we talked about doing like the survey, um another one would be, what else we have in there, um oh, the compensation plan, those are kind of one-time things that we maybe do every three to five years and we would pay for those with fund balance to reduce the levy amount.
But that doesn't change our budget for this year.
Yeah, it does.
And the budget.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
It does change, budgets change the source of revenue.
So we're still budgeting to spend that much money.
Right, but you're not, you're not, you don't have to put it on a levy.
You're both, okay, you're both right.
Yeah.
The expenses are still happening.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't show on, on the P and L sheet, it wouldn't show as we're spending a total of twelve million dollars.
Right, it would be a revenue, it would be a revenue from, from your fund to put in that would balance out the expenditure, so then your total levy need would be less.
It's a very good use of fund balance, because you're doing it one time.
For things that are not ongoing, for things that come up. I think the comp plan stuff is a prime example for that, because no one, I'm not gonna continue that sentence, is a great way to use it for something that is required of us. Or the services for potentially the ball fields, I think that'd be another thing, because that's a, that's a generational act, like that is a gonna last far longer, yes.
Forty-year act.
To me, that's something where, number one, that fund balance is, it's not just healthy, it's beyond healthy, it's like Whole Foods healthy.
I like that idea.
And and again, you you already discussed that multiple of these contracts might end up being less. I do not want to ever use fund balance for ongoing costs, because that is a terrible idea.
Terrible idea.
But for these one ti- and only because it is so healthy, for some of these one-time costs that are not ongoing, I am, I am fine with that.
Study for the hundred and eighty, hundred and eighty acres, some of those one-time things that have long-term implications for us. Getting that hundred and eighty acres developed would be big returns for us in terms of amount of of taxes.
It'll more than pay for itself.
Yeah, and so if, and again, I I would think that, you know, Clarissa would talk with with our bond people and say, we don't want to do something stupid either. Tammy, what could we, could we take five hundred thousand out of there and not take a ding in our credit rating? I mean, we need to be careful about that, but if, again, it's part of, how do you balance it all out in a way that makes sense and gets us where we need to be um and keeps the increase in taxes a little bit less than what we're talking about?
Okay, and just to make sure I'm understanding this, so the example you're, give one example of one of the one-time.
Comp plan.
So in like a hundred, was it a hundred?
Hundred fifty thousand?
Hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand, if we pay for that with the general fund.
Balance.
The general.
With with.
The bank account.
With our.
The bank account. It still is gonna show in our budget as an expense under administration.
Yeah.
And so when we come to the.
Go under planning and zoning, or comp, community development, I mean.
Okay, and it's gonna show there under that department, and then when we get to setting the budget for twenty twenty seven, it's gonna show that there was this expense there and that this much was spent by that department.
Yeah.
And I can't, I, other than the 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 mayor and city councils, department going down this year, I, they don't go down.
But that's, he wouldn't include it again next year in his budget, because it's, it's not ongoing expense, it's a one-time.
I mean, technically, we're talking about it.
But there's been more ongoing, there's been the single expenses every year that we've done this, but it's never gone down the next year as a result of that.
The comp plan, if he, if we do the comp plan and it's a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we get to twenty twenty seven, he's not gonna need the comp plan, so a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars will not show up in twenty twenty seven. Other, granted, his other expenses may go up, but the a hundred and twenty-five thousand won't be in there.
That's my concern, is usually when there's a certain amount budgeted, you find a way to spend that much again, the next year, because we spent that much the year before, and that's, I mean, when you look at the budget, like, that's what's happened, we don't see numbers go down ever, they keep going up.
I mean, I could see it, I I think of it as a, you are correct, and I see it happen a lot, especially in in my job, where the difference is, is someone's job paid with a grant or is it paid with state funds? And that's a very hard balance, because there are certain things where there's expectation of this money's gonna continue, always paid with a temporary grant and then we run into issues, which is why I I hate using grants for ongoing costs.
Less than ongoing costs.
But in this case, and to clarify, when that time does come, are, do, are, do we pay upfront for all three years? And so it is only in this year, or is it gonna be like forty thousand a year for three years?
We should be paying a little bit this year, next year, and then.
Based on percentage of completion, right?
So for this example, it technically is not a single, but it it's a three-year thing, but the the survey is another one, whereas a one-time thing, there will not be hey, let's do a repeat of it every year, like, that's not happening.
I don't, I don't think that Nicole and Clarissa are gonna say, well, you spent a million dollars last year, we're gonna spend a million, three hundred thousand this year, because you don't need a three percent, they go through line by line when they're doing this and say, do you really need that, what's the purpose of it? You know, I don't know any cities that just say, well, we spent, the the biggest problem I used to remember seeing is there'd be budget and we get to the end of the year and departments want to spend that budget down, because they're afraid they won't get the same amount next year. My view is always, I don't care what you got last year, you have to justify what you need next year to me and to the city council, because that's the way the world should work, you get the money you need to operate your department, and that'll vary, yours here, often you'll see budgets will be less because there'll be a big capital item, you know, the fire truck, the chief's gonna have, what, a million and a half dollars in in a fire truck? Well, the following year, he's not going to have that million and a half in his budget, it's gonna come down.
You'd hope so, and I think psychologically, that's hard to do, though, I I think I.
I don't think so at all.
The thing that will be in the budget next year is when you hire somebody and you start running that service, that will reoccur, right? That's an ongoing expense.
So I'm I'm not, I'm, if that's the solution for getting it down to ten percent, great. I'd hate for that to be the only avenue taken versus all these other discussions we've had of really looking through.
It it won't be the only.
I mean, that can't be.
It won't be the only avenue, it's just another avenue that allows us to get some of these one-time things that we should do logically done without increasing the levy to accomplish them.
And if we can get there without it, then we should do that first.
Yeah, if we can, but I'm thinking that's gonna be real difficult.
Well, did you see any of the strategic goals that we identified in February that you wanted to push back, because I didn't, I didn't find anything.
But I mean, I guess my point again is, as they were going through those, that wasn't that much of the the budget, it was a very minimal amount.
But a lot of those were one-time costs in there for studies.
Yeah.
And things like that, right?
Yeah.
And some of those things you need to do to carry on the business of your city, making sure that your employees are taken care of appropriately so that they don't abscond off to some city that's gonna, you know, hopeful that the grass is greener on the other side of the fence.
I mean, like if you, if we go back to them, I think there's only a few of them that we truly can actually say we can't go for, the the Met Council one, we're kind of.
We're not doing it.
Can't do anything there. I mean, obviously, the number one, the first one on there is one that can be adjusted, there, the two were brought up right away, the from the financial, the forty thousand decrease, from Chief with the thirteen thousand, I can't remember the specific item that it was, but.
G P S location, study for the fire hall.
And so there was maybe seventy-five thousand dollars of items on there that, how much was it for item number one that you were saying we're gonna be spending for the the plan for the ball fields and the hundred and seventy-seven acres?
So that next year's budgeted about ninety thousand.
I I mean, maybe that's it, I mean, I don't know where else to.
The other thing I'd point out, that things like in the comp plan, where we have a utility component, we could take some from our utility fund balance a proportion of the comp plan from those funds, so it's not just being smart, because we're we're gonna be projecting a future of our parks and our utilities and our transportation, and so we have funds that are self-sustaining like water, sewer, stormwater, we can take a portion of those costs from those fund balances, those cash balances in those funds. And so stepping back and saying, can we be as smart as we can be to accomplish these goals and and for these one-time, take them from some of our available cash, and that way we can, you know, drive that levy we need down as far as we can and cut out some things we just don't need, it's it's a combination of all those, but it occurred to me, you know, that we did have some cash on hand that we could use to I would only support cash for one-time expenditures.
Right, agreeing.
And I, again, I still go back to the levies for the capital plant, the the parks. Let's cut those down, let's decrease the C I P so we can still achieve the goal of in twenty years or thirty years, twenty years getting to that thirty million dollar debt, because we're going from both directions, not just increasing revenue.
So one, one asterisk, I I, because Clarissa mentioned this too, it, part of that park levy is to bill it up to pay for things that we already have that are depreciating.
Like the playgrounds?
Playgrounds are one example, but it's the, it's the entire system, and we're, we're gonna have a conversation next in September, I think many of us are in agreement that we're gonna need to have a a very quality conversation about future cost. But it's it's not just for new future items, it's also for the entire system that already exists, and we are playing catch-up with it, because I mean, the reason I support it is because development is slowing down and we had to have a new source of revenue to make up for development slowing down. Otherwise, we wouldn't have a parks levy.
Right.
We wouldn't have a parks fund to begin with without that levy, there's gonna be a time when development is not adding anything to it, and then we are in a very bad situation.
Well, Matt, if we put money into the levy. Or the fund.
Alright, so we, so we have, we have a a couple of things we've discussed, five, five-year olds into seven, what does that look like? Uh are there a couple of one-time things that we could use cash for in a very limited and specific way? Are there other limited, not limited, are there other very specific and purposeful ways to help wholeness, that's nineteen percent increase, it's not twenty-one percent increase?
I think it was twenty-one.
For the rate, you don't use the rate.
The rate?
The rate, the rate is.
Eighteen percent.
But the rate itself is, is meaningless, because it's based upon your.
I was talking about the actual dollars spent.
Yes, the actual dollar spent is nineteen.
I remember it said twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
For the impact to a homeowner.
Oh, I'm talking about just the total dollars spent.
Oh, alright, well, we're talking the same thing, yeah, it's nineteen percent for the typical homeowner. So what are the other ways we can reduce that?
Okay, great.
Okay, do you need to talk about um the strategic financial management plan anymore? Do you have any questions about any of those documents? We've kind of talked about them all already, the different studies.
Right. Okay. We're just a little beyond our schedule in the agenda.
What was the last?
Um, let's ask them if they want to talk anymore about the strategic planning, the fee studies or the the other study.
Take a look at paying the one-time costs with.
My question, are we on board with what I described and I can?
Yeah.
Yes.
Awesome.
Yep.
Alright, last item on the agenda for this evening, city center. All right, last item on the agenda for this evening, city center wall art.
Here we go, so we have the city center, and there's blank walls, and so um there are blank walls with some lights to highlight. Artwork or something that's not there, so um I I just threw this up as a discussion item, cause I'm curious, what's our plan? Um and so I had worked with um architect from Leo Daley, as well as an art lady. To kind of talk about the common areas and what could be, and just to kind of throw it out there to council, to give you some ideas. And to see just any input on where we go from here.
I love that this is a topic, here is necessary. Uh my first initial thoughts. Um historical society stuff, I find to be great. I, my personal perspective is, I think most residents, when they come in here, would think to see that type of stuff, the history of Lake Elmo. The prime examples of gathering spaces, of current parks, of history, of prior individuals. So I think the historical, the the opportunities that exist through historical society and finding those and enlarging and framing, fantastic. I, especially given the costs, some of the the paintings, not not an eye cup of tea. Especially given the photos and blowing those up would be vastly uh cheaper. I I've, maybe there's an opportunity for yearly artwork from schools. I don't know what that would consist of, but. You know, here's this year's winners for uh paintings of the year for the fifth graders who are graduating at. At our elementary in this, in the district, that type of thing. Um, I I I think there are many, I don't wanna, my personal thing is not to have too much where it's everywhere, but there's obviously, there's. It's lacking, so I I I would go down the historical route myself, and I think this would be a prime example of some of the. Budgeted for twenty-five, I think this is a prime example to use from the fund. It's a one-time thing for the People's Hall within the People's Building. I I don't. But you, oh wait, this is already in the twenty-five budget, so it's already there, it already exists.
No, we have it tentatively scheduled in the twenty-six budget.
Oh, yeah.
As a C I P item for twenty-five thousand.
Okay. I like the idea of some local artists, but I I thought I saw something where one of the walls, you could, like the Da Vinci Art Fest. They get some winners or give them an opportunity to.
Yeah, so, yes, we did, um.
Did I see something in there?
Yep, so it's actually the lobby mezzanine that wall, that's where we decided we could get, um, well, not decide, an option. Of just um like cable, and then you can change out, like, it wouldn't be sculptures, I think it would be.
Right.
Flat art, um and so that is, can be a direction. Do you do you want us to look at what a community art program would be? But it was just for that wall upstairs.
Yeah, I mean, that to me, like, would be an opportunity that everyone's artwork is due by National Night Out, and it's all posted on National Night Out, and people come and vote. And that painting then is hung up there for next year.
I think we should have a statue of the mayor, you know, chiseled in granite, put right on the side of the lobby.
The first mayor?
No, the current mayor.
It wouldn't take up that much.
Do we do the thinking part?
Statue.
Hey. That sounded like a cut. Um, yeah, I like the idea of the historical stuff, and I like the idea of um. Using local artists. I know there are quite a few artists in the area that sometimes it's a photo, sometimes it's a painting, that that they're really pretty cool. Uh, we have an employee that does some pretty cool art, right?
We might have some photographers as well.
Yeah, we do. I don't know who they are over that way.
I haven't talked to the set of employees.
All right.
Maybe they have retired from that.
I I, I mean, I don't, I don't think we gotta spend the the big money on the art that may come and go as. You know, that you're gonna see someplace else necessarily.
Agreed.
I don't think we should, maybe it's the backdrop of the conversation tonight, but uh, you know, if we're looking at items for the twenty twenty-six C I P. That can be pushed back a year, in my mind, this is it, even though I think it's a great idea, and I think if we're gonna go forward with it, I. I think there's a lot of great opportunities to get art in here from the community at no cost. So I, yeah.
I I I would push for the the historical things, is to have some on the on the walls uh for people when they come in.
So one, that one caveat, for the historical, the real historical society photos, you can imagine the quality. Um so they can't be blown up too big, and so there there was some displays on what it would be like, and so um we pictured. The walls in here would be where we would display the historical society pictures, um but what I'm hearing you say is. On the other areas, perhaps, you're not into the artwork stuff, but like real pictures of Lake Elmo. It does have to be like old, can be of a, just some sort of abstract.
Could be a sunset of Lake Elmo.
Right.
It could be uh green acres sledding during the winter with kids smiling.
Um and then obviously a community art um program. I I don't know that I, I I haven't researched the programs. But I wasn't envisioning that that would be on every wall.
Yeah, right.
It's like a designated area.
I concur. I don't know how weather feel, but yeah, it doesn't have to be on every wall.
No.
Agreed. Less can be more.
I agree.
Okay.
You agree with moving forward, keeping in the plan for this next year?
Yes.
Yeah, let me just add that into the one-time, as far as I'm concerned, cause those will be there. For a long time, it's it's history of Lake Elmo. Um I was a little, when that came on the first time we discussed that. Was a little surprised that that wasn't in the, or that that got spent out of the budget when the building was done, cause I I'm certain that was talked about. When when the building stuff was coming up, so that's disappointing.
And prior to doing anything, um bring back real costs and and real ideas to you, obviously.
Sounds good. All right.
Yeah, we didn't talk about the stormwater fees, but let's do do that another night.
Yeah, we're we're not gonna talk about that tonight, Councilmember Dragasich.
It was on the agenda.
Yep, so um city engineer Nate um provided a memo about.
Oh, yeah, it is on there.
So.
Under the strategic management.
We've been here long enough.
I think we should stay here till midnight.
Okay, one more question, since we're all here, um for the hundredth um anniversary celebration. We're moving forward with all of your guys' help, securing vendors, so we're doing good on the food trucks, sounds like we got a band, maybe.
We got a band.
Yep, and so um some ideas that have been brought up to to add potentially um inflatables. Or any sort of city swag, so I just wanted to throw that out there to see how you feel. I know we have the fifty thousand dollar cap. So I, so how do you feel about that?
Ask bus- businesses would sponsor that.
Would they?
I mean, they sponsored it for.
Can you take?
National Night Out. I can take that on for sure. I think it's, I I think you'd just be reaching out to. Connect Lake Elmo and having them send an email to everybody that was there for National Night Out. I mean, that's the group of businesses, and I think they had two bouncy houses this year, and you give them the opportunity to.
What took on the insurance for that?
I'm not sure. Is that covered?
There, you know, there's a large, you pay a larger fee.
I did um just reach out to insurance today, and he's gonna check on it, so I don't know, but I don't know about that.
Cause I remember one year we were looking at doing that, and they charge a lot higher fee when you're doing it, when they, like, um, as a public event. The fee's a lot high. I, that might not be the insurance part of it, but.
Cause I I've rented large bouncy houses myself, and obviously they're popular, and there are multiple cities that do it for events, have seen it before. I I support it as long as it it fits in a location, like.
Yeah, I just, I think if people come down with families and stuff, something to give the the kids to. Bounce around in, I guess, would is, I thought would be, actually, I didn't think of it, somebody else, I was talking to him about it. And he said, oh, you're gonna have bouncy houses, and I'm like, didn't think about that, that's a great idea.
See, and yeah, oh, there's a diversity of bouncy houses. There are ones that just kids, you can just see the kids are standing like, this one's dumb.
Yeah.
And there are other ones where they love, so I would definitely recommend not asking us.
Well, let the the businesses figure it out.
You said you were looking to get two of, did I hear that?
I have a couple.
Oh, I I don't know.
The right number is.
I don't have, just throwing out there, and then the other idea was any sort of city, city swag, like, we don't really have. You know, obviously, um at Lake Elmo Night Out, we had our um compostable bags, but that was paid for by a recycling grant. Um, so, but just, I don't know, if there's any.
T-shirt.
Yeah, anything.
Well, I know that some people will be selling t-shirts and stuff like that. I don't know that the city needs to bear the expense of. I mean, we're already providing the the dance and um the area location and and the fireworks, so. I think we can, I I, so I go to a lot of conferences and I get the swag, and then it ends up in some drawer, so. You know, I guess that's where I'm coming from.
I think to defer the cost, we should have a dance with the mayor for ten dollars. You put, you get a ticket for ten bucks, you get to dance with the mayor.
My wife won't be there, so you'll be at net zero.
You say, can it run a deficit?
Yeah. I'll have to pay them not to dance with them.
Okay, so no, the, no, any stuff.
Yeah, I can't see where that's a a benefit we're already providing. I think, I think we do need to get some. Uh, I don't know, we need to get some signs out, um maybe on the around town or something like that, but.
Yeah, we will definitely push our communications. We just wanted to get.
Yeah.
Stuff settled. I didn't wanna say, we're gonna have vendors and a band, and then we don't.
Right, no, we're we're we're, we've got a band.
Do you have hard numbers where we're at for the fifty thousand dollar budget?
Who's the band?
I actually just, um we're still waiting on a number for a stage or confirmation of that, but we're all under that.
Well, under.
Tight fit.
Tight fit?
Yeah.
I don't know them, but I just wondering.
I mean, I. No, I'm good. All right, gonna adjourn tonight's meeting at nine thirty P M. Thank you, everybody.
And I can show the high school for homecoming.